Good morning and welcome to the December 21st Board of Supervisors meeting for Trinity County. It's been a while. Let's see, Supervisor Gog can remind us of some presentations? All right, thank you so much for joining us today. We do have a pretty full meeting. We have a number of presentations to get started. We're going to go ahead and go through those presentations before we go to broader public comment. And so I do anticipate that might take up to an hour or more with the number of presentations we have. So with that, we will get started with Presentations, Board of Supervisors, Item 1.1. Receive a presentation from Trinity Public Utilities District regarding the community choice aggregate process and future steps. No fiscal impact. I'll give a little background on this item or topic. The CCA is a community choice aggregate, which is essentially a way for the public to dictate where their power can come from. So on the coast, there's River Coast Authority, so people have a choice of adopting more, I think it's renewable and environmentally friendly power. In Trinity County, we obviously have the TPUD, and then we also have a couple areas in, I believe, just District 5 and District 4. And I might be wrong, there might be a little bit in District 3. But those are the areas which are served by PG&E. And so CCA would give us the opportunity to take those PG&E areas and adopt a power and have essentially a cooperation with TPUD that would deliver the administration side of the power company to those residents. So you guys will probably have some questions. Paul Hauser is here to help answer some of those questions because some of this stuff is technical. And there's some federal regulations, some state regulations, there's the CPUC has to approve the process. So there are some layers of the process. I believe Supervisor Groves had been the last one on this item a number of years ago. And we have been waiting on the data from PG&E. And so since then, we have acquired that data. And so we're kind of at the step of how are we going to analyze that data with who? And then the next steps moving forward in the couple of options on how a CCA can roll out in Trinity County.
All right, can I borrow this map just to show? I should have came with one, but I happened to see it there. You've covered it, Jeremy, but for everybody's benefit, the PUD district, this is a whole county. There's roughly a slice out here from Big Bar Downriver we don't serve. That's PG&E serve from Humboldt County. And basically, there's a line almost right across here from Forest Glen South against the post here in the back. You know, we have a carve-out right here that PG&E doesn't serve, and then everything south we don't serve. So that's roughly the areas. Those areas are served primarily from Humboldt. There may be part of Far South County that has some service from Tama County, but it's all PG&E. And like you mentioned, we've talked about this in the past, there's a number of community choice aggregation districts in the state. And I know one of the features, maybe of all of them, but certainly almost all of them, is that they get to choose how environmentally friendly they want their power to be. The county has the latent powers to form a community choice aggregation district. The PUD, we looked at it, actually, when Keith was a board member of the PUD, he brought this issue up because I know when I pulled up my correspondence with the Western Air Power Administration, it goes back to April of 2012. So that's how long we've been talking about this. One of the things that makes a community choice aggregation district, a CCA particularly attractive in Trinity County is the power supply issue, which is the hardest issue to establish for the CCA, is already solved. And that's because of the 1955 Trinity River Division Act. That granted the citizens of Trinity County the right in perpetuity to use the power that's generated by that water diversion from Trinity or Lewiston Reservoir over to the Sacramento Valley. You know, that water flows through Trinity Power Plant, Kark Power Plant at the head of Whiskey Town, Spring Creek, just before Keswick, and then we get our pro-rata share of Keswick. As a result, we have carbon-free renewable hydropower that is really the cheapest supply in the state. So these other areas that have formed their own community choice aggregation districts, they've had to negotiate upfront with an entity like Shell Power. And they just don't have the access to the low-cost hydropower that you would or the citizens of Trinity County would if the county were to form a CCA in those parts of the county. Now, I know this is one of the options you've put on the list here, is the county can join an existing CCA in a neighboring county. And while that's probably technically possible, there are some real complications in that because one of the requirements of first preference power from the federal government is that it can only be used by citizens of Trinity County. Candidly, that's why the PUD's service territory is not the entire county. So in 1993, when the PUD bought a lot of assets from PG&E, there were assets all located in the county. For instance, if we were to try to serve Hawkins Bar now, it would mean a line extension and a major substation upgrade from our Big Flat Substation. PG&E couldn't sell us their substation in Humboldt County because by law, we're not allowed to serve in Humboldt County. And we've went over this multiple times with the Western Air Power Administration. The power has to be delivered to end users in Trinity County. So the difficulty in that is those two areas of the county that we don't serve, the primary infrastructure at least starts in another county. But for a CCA, the way it works is the power would still be delivered over PG&E-owned lines. I know I did an estimate, I don't know, probably five or six years ago, and my very rough estimate, without the data that Jeremy talks about, just an estimate on that data, is that forming a CCA could probably lower the rates of those folks in, you know, Downriver or Far South County by about 25%. I don't know if that's still true. An analysis of the data could certainly determine that. One thing that we have at the PUD is we have a history of federal power prices going back to 1982 when the district started delivering power. So while our price of power fluctuates dramatically with the drought, the same thing would be true with the CCA if it were supplied with Trinity hydropower. We have that history, and we could probably do a pretty reasonable estimate in terms of what to expect in terms of savings. Another thing for folks to realize is that, you know, we just had a big winter storm. We had almost 4,000 folks out on our system, over half our system out at one time. That restoration activity would still be the responsibility of PG&E. While the power delivered over PG&E lines would be Trinity hydropower, all of those restoration activities, anything associated with keeping the wires in the air would still be the responsibility of PG&E. And I will say this, PG&E, as CCA's have proliferated over the last several years, PG&E and their rate cases have loaded up more of their costs into the wire side of the business because candidly, people can't bypass that charge, right? So I don't know if the savings are still 25%. I would be shocked if there weren't still significant savings because Trinity hydropower is just considerably less expensive. And, you know, it's 100% carbon-free. You know, my guess is if the county formed a CCA, you wouldn't have another power option because it would be no more environmentally friendly and certainly more expensive as an option. The PUD actually, years ago, looked into forming a CCA. It's not within the PUD's latent powers as it is within the county's latent powers to do so. We would have had to have a vote of the entire area in election. Those things in the past have faced considerable opposition from PG&E, and we just never undertook it. I know the county has looked at this a couple of times. I don't think it's gotten as far as getting information from PG&E in the past. And I know my board has been supportive in the past. You know, admittedly, I've had some, we've had some changes at the board, but I would anticipate, I can't promise, but I would anticipate that the PUD board would do everything we could to help facilitate the county forming a CCA. That's the idea behind the first preference power, is to make it available for all of the citizens of Trinity County. Again, looking at the options you have here, if you wanted to contact, contract with somebody else to administer the CCA, you wouldn't offend us in the least. But what I would propose to my board, and I think that would support, I know they have in the past, is if you wanted us to administer it for you in any, you know, limited or as much capacity as you wanted, we would do it at cost. You know, such that we just cover our administrative costs. We want to do that in terms of just making sure that power is available to everybody in Trinity County. If somebody else wants to do it, again, it wouldn't offend us. Realistically, we interact with the Western Air Power Administration and Bureau of Reclamation on a regular basis. It's part of our regular business model. You know, at least in theory, it shouldn't cost as much to do that. Other CCA's are certainly managing power supply issues, but they're not managing them with the federal government. So if I were you, I would look at the PUD as a very viable and realistic option to do that. But I don't, I know you got a lot of presentations. Oh, something critical, there's the window to get first preference power for any entity. I know whether tribal nations have tried to sometimes acquire first preference power. Well, it's not first preference, it's something comparable. But there's a window built into the federal statutes, it's a five-year window. So the date now, you have to provide notice 18 months in advance of when power delivery starts that you want to receive power from the first preference power. So the next window for that, we would have to give notice, or the county would have to give notice, by July 1 of 2025 for power delivery beginning January 1 of 2027. And I know that sounds like it's a long way out, there's actually a lot of things to do between now and then. So, I mean, it's not like it's an emergency that you have to decide now. But if you know, if you think you want to go forward with this, I would encourage that we not delay. And certainly, if you want us to help you, we'll be glad to do it. But even if you don't, I would encourage that you move forward. And that window opens up every five years. You know, the last notice was July 1 of 2020, and obviously, that's passed us. So with that, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, does the board have any questions?
Paul, thank you, and nice to see you. I'm only hearing positive things, but one statement you made was that in the past, you had, there had been consideration to possibly undertake this, and it was met with considerable opposition?
Well, I don't think there's been any opposition locally. When I say that, PG&E has a history of opposing CCA's. I like to be optimistic. A CCA in Trinity County, I think, is less threatening to PG&E than other CCA's that have formed because by law, it's limited in its size. It can really only serve Trinity County, at least if you pursue the hydro, federal hydropower option. So I can't imagine there being local opposition, though one never knows. I mean, if you're going to lower people's rates, I mean, reliability, everything else will stay the same, rates will go down. To me, it's hard for there to be opposition to that, but I don't know.
Can you speak to, you mentioned the thing about cannabis and the carbon-free?
Yeah, so my understanding is that, and I won't, there probably some folk, some of you may know, there is a requirement in the state that cannabis cultivators use carbon-free renewable power starting at some date certain. You know, any of those cultivators that are on our system, they will automatically meet that requirement. If you formed a CCA and used Trinity hydropower, they would also meet that requirement. Where, it's not that PG&E can't supply that option, but folks are going to pay extra for that. If they want an all-carbon-free option, they're going to pay almost any supplier in the state more to get that. Where here, they would not. That's another benefit of forming a CCA.
So I want to, thanks for bringing this around again, and Jeremy.
Both here, you contacted me, yeah.
So I do want to point out to the board, one of the times that it got dropped was that we had to sign this date so far in the future, and then everybody goes, oh, that's so far from now, we'll just deal with it then. And we missed a whole five-year cycle by doing that. So I would urge this to move on, even though it's a long ways away. But I wanted to clear one thing up that you said, that in a CCA, the people don't, do not have to take Trinity County power. They can choose to remain with PG&E power and pay more if they wanted. We're not forcing them to do something. Could you clear that up for us?
So the county could certainly make that a feature of the community choice aggregation district, that it could be voluntary participation. Yes, you could.
Okay. And could you just really, if we chose to have you do the analysis, outline what that looks like in the timeline and?
Yeah, okay, so like if you wanted the PUD to do that analysis, we need to get that load data from PG&E that we haven't seen, and there may be, we might have to sign a confidentiality.
Oh yeah, there's just a non-disclosure agreement.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any problem doing that. So we do that analysis based on the amount of load there. I do some projections, looking back on what our power costs have been. And I would equate, if there's such thing as an average year anymore, it seems like we're in drought more than we're not. But we'd look at past power prices, and I could provide you with projection of, here's how much we could lower rates for those folks. And PG&E publishes their wire charges, so you know, it's a stack of charges, it's transmission, it's distribution. But all those would not go away, but basically, the piece that would come out is PG&E's generation cost. It would be replaced with the Trinity PUD cost. And then we'd have to make some estimates of what administration would be. You know, this is maybe a minor negative in that a CCA in Trinity County would be very small. I think that's another reason to use somebody that's already at least running a utility or administering a CCA because, of course, you might decide to do it yourself, or you might decide to have the PUD do it for some time period and then say, you know what, we could bring this in-house and do it. That wouldn't offend the PUD either. But the administrative costs, you know, the economies of scale don't work in our favor in terms of a very small CCA. So that would be one potential negative. But I still think the difference in power cost will be substantial enough that there'll be reasonable savings for those folks involved.
So you guys are looking at a rate increase, I'm staying away as far as I can from your headaches. But even if you raised that power rate, could you describe like the difference between what you guys will be, assuming that you get this rate in, what an average PG&E bill is?
Sure, so let me be careful with this explanation because I don't want to give false impressions. So even with the rate increases we're looking at, the other thing I'll remind you of is PG&E continues to raise rates. We think that PG&E is roughly going to continue to be triple our rates. See, another thing to, just to throw numbers out, PG&E is triple our rates. If they do a 5% rate increase, that's equivalent to us doing a 15% rate increase because they're literally already triple our rates. That can get lost in the shuffle when they advertise they're doing a 3% or a 4% rate increase, is how much additional money that is. But this only affects the power supply piece. So I don't want to give the impression that the CCA would have rates as low as the PUD rates because of those wire charges, those other things that are built into PG&E's rates. So when I say, in the past, I've looked at it and thought, you could lower rates 25%. I mean, they need to be lowered a lot more than that to get down to ours, that's going to continue in the future. The other thing that will continue to happen in a CCA is every time PG&E did a rate increase, their rates would go up. And it would be beyond the county's control to stop it because they would be on the wire side of the business. That would still be regulated at the California Public Utility Commission. But you would also have some control over rates in that the county would determine what would happen as power costs went up. And I would suggest you would do something similar to what the PUD does in that you have a drought escalator that fluctuates based on hydro conditions because that's the main fluctuation we see. In a drought, we can see rates double. And then, of course, when the drought ends, we can see them cut in half. You would face the same thing with the CCA power supply, which is a portion of the cost that people would see. But on top of that, you also see a gradual inflation. So you will have to look at rate increases. You know, if we were managing it, we would make recommendations to you every year in terms of what the budget looks like. So I don't want to present this to you as zero effort on your part. There is some effort, but you know, if there's opportunity to lower people's bills 20 or 25%, I think it's worth the effort. Sorry for how long.
Yeah, no, no, that's, my problem in my head is I've dealt with this for so long, and then I think it's very complex.
It is, yeah.
So Jeremy, where do we go from here?
Well, I was going to say, you know, as this is just a presentation, I will bring this back to the board after the new year as an item of further discussion and looking for guidance as the avenue moves forward. So after the new year, I'll provide some of the additional documentation. And there's a bunch of information that PG&E supplies as far as, I think it's a joint powers agreement and then notification to CPUC. So I mean, there's like five items of documentation that have to get filled out, looked through by legal, then CPUC gets notified. So January, I'll bring it back.
Okay, great.
And then full disclosure, and for the record, both Supervisor Fraser and I, although we're in these areas that are served by PG&E, we are both off-grid. So we will serve, there's no benefit to either one of us, just to be clear. Thank you very much, Paul.
Is it okay if I kind of share the interest? It appears you have some interest with my board to get them thinking about the process a little bit? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks so much for your time. We have some special guests here who'd like to make public comments. So we're going to do a quick, I apologize, we're going to do a quick public comment with the group that's here. It's my understanding you guys have three minutes, and you wanted to bring something to the board's attention. So we're just going to do this and then go back to the presentation.
My name is LaTija Sanchez, I'm with the CIU Local 2015, we represent the IHSS home care workers. And we brought each one of you a Christmas tree, and for each ornament on the Christmas tree, it represents two consumers that are being cared for in the county. So there's a tree for each supervisor. And then also, we have just the envelope here with a little bit of information, probably for each supervisor, probably information. I know that Margaret's very familiar with, familiar face here. We just wanted to make sure, we know that Trinity County was one of the first counties in the Northern Region to accept this supplemental wage. And we're very thankful for that because you guys set the bar for most of the counties in the Northern Region. And they got on board, and it set ripple effect, right? So everybody else got on board. So that was a good thing for us in the Northern Counties because usually, we see the Southern Counties do all the great things, right? And then we get the trickle effects way later on. So it was really good that Trinity County was one of the first counties that set that bar for the Northern Counties. But it's time again for us to come to negotiate again. And we are excited because we know that there are a lot of good things that come out of this program during the pandemic. We know that IHSS is one of the workforces that continue to work and provide services and continue to bring revenue into the county. We know that also 84 cents to the dollar, if you were to provide a dollar wage increase to the providers, that it would, 84 cents of that money would be coming back into the county for revenue to be able to spend on other things in the county. Because we know that there are other services that deserve wages and wage increases, but there's no other service like, there's no other program like IHSS that provides that type of wage benefit. So these are just some handouts for each supervisor, I don't know where I can leave these at, that provide some information about the wages. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. They look beautiful. All right, we're going to jump back into 1.2 here, which is Receive a Presentation from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy regarding their annual report. No fiscal impact.
Hi, good morning. My name is Angela Atherton, I'm the Executive Officer of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. And point of clarification, we're here presenting to you all today because SB 208 passed earlier this year. This was a bill that was authorized by Senator Dally. The bill expanded the Sierra Nevada Conservancy boundary such that that boundary now includes a portion of Trinity County, which I believe is District 1 and Supervisor Groves' district. So we wanted to just come and introduce ourselves to you all. This a little bit links to our annual report, but I'll get to that in a minute. So if you don't mind, I have a PowerPoint presentation, and I'd like to give you all a general overview of sort of who we are and what we do. So who is SNC? We're a non-regulatory state agency under the Californian Natural Resources Agency. We really do focus on the triple bottom line in our service area. I'll get to that map here in just a second. But we really do focus on the environmental, social, and economic well-being of the area that we serve. We are, maybe I'll start here with what we don't do. So we are not a regulatory entity. We're a natural resources sort of land, we don't own land, we don't, but we're primarily a granting agency. Sorry, let me slow down. So we do not acquire fee titles and ownership of property directly. We do not exercise the power of eminent domain or condemnation, and we do not affect water rights held by others. What we do do at our core is we're a granting entity. So we receive state funds, and we have grant programs that are overseen by our governing board. And we get money out on the ground to support those triple bottom line initiatives that I talked about before. Our primary initiative is called the Watershed Improvement Program. This is, it was codified in 2018, and it has five sort of. This is, it was codified in 2018, and it has five sort of really important regional goals that we focus on. These are forest and watershed health, resilient Sierra Nevada communities, strategic land conservation, and vibrant record and tourism. So most of the funding, well, actually all of the funding that we receive from the state, whatever the source, bond, general fund or other, is filtered through those four primary initiatives. We have a fifth regional goal under the Watershed Improvement Program, which is communications or impactful regional identity, where we really do listen to our board of directors, our local stakeholders, our partners, and try and amplify regional needs, regional issues, regional opportunities to state partners such that local needs, local issues, as I was saying, are reflected in state planning and funding decisions that are being made. And so that's sort of a bridge rule that we play. So the region that we serve, with the passage of SB 208, the region that we serve will be expanded to 27 million acres, and all are part of 24 counties. So we're adding about 2 million acres and two new portions of two new counties and a little bit more Chester County. So the boundary expansion that you can see there, there's a dotted blue line on the map. Everything to the west of that is the newest addition under SB 208. Basically, what it does is it includes the McLeod, Upper Sack, Upper Trinity, and the remainder of the Pitt River watersheds in the Sierra Nevada Conservancy boundary. This basically is all of the watersheds that feed the state and central water projects. This is a little bit of a closer view of the actual area that was added to our region. And like I said, this, I believe, covers District One and Supervisor Grove's district. So the way that we work is statutorily, when we were created in 2004, the Sierra Nevada region that we serve was divided into the six subregions that you see there. Initially, the new portion of our boundary will be added to the North Subregion. Staff have one year to sort of look at our boundaries, the boundaries of our subregions, make recommendations for the legislature to consider, and then we will include potential reshuffling of those boundary lines in our annual report at the end of next year. Again, the way that we work, we have three primary offices throughout the region. Our headquarters is based in Auburn in Placer County, but we have area reps that live and work in each of the six subregions that you see there. Additionally, we have one county supervisor from each of those subregions that serves on our board at any given time. I'll go into the makeup of our board here in a second, but I really want to emphasize that what's different about the Sierra Nevada Conservancy as opposed to other regulatory state agencies is that local participation, the requirement that we have by law, local supervisors who participate and engage on our board. By tradition, we have one of our state appointees serve as chair, but by, I'm sorry, by law, we have our state appointees serve as chair, but by tradition, we always have our vice chair represented by one of the local representatives on our board. It's just, it's a critical way that the Conservancy works, is that local representation. We really do, like I said, we have people who live and work in the region. We actively involve in the local collaboratives, the local groups that are working to address the natural resource issues in communities throughout our region, and then we try and elevate those perspectives, as I said before, those needs and opportunities to the state so that we are, we feel like we are creating more voice for rural communities throughout the Sierra Nevada. So there's, I mentioned before that we have statute that defines how our board is made up. Let me just skip to the next slide. So just so you're clear, we have, like I said, at any given time, six local representatives. This slide is current through the end of this calendar year as it relates to our local government appointees. We have five governors' appointees. We have two legislative appointees, and then we have three non-voting federal liaison advisors who serve on our board at any time. At the end of this year, Paul Rowan from Sierra County, Rosemary Smallcom from Mariposa County, and Nathan Maxon will roll off. Ron Haynes will become our vice chair. Terry O'Brien from the governor's appointment is our board chair. We have new board members that will come on in March. We have quarterly meetings. Those representatives will be determined by the counties. And I think it's also important to note that there are three or four counties in each of the six subregions. We do not pick and choose which supervisors sit on our board. It's between the counties. It's a discussion between the counties in that subregion who they want to sit on the board as, you know, that acting board member, who's the liaison, what's the order of rotation between the counties and a subregion. So we provide information, we do outreach, we answer questions, but we don't dictate that by any stretch of the imagination. So how can we serve you and why do we feel like it's of value for portions of Trinity County to be added to the Sierra Nevada region? As I said before, we're a natural resource-based entity. We really do focus on watershed improvement. Forest health is a big element of what we do. So is recovery, given the scale of the fires that we've been seeing across this Sierra Nevada over these last few years. So to date, we have awarded over $120 million throughout our region. Most of that has been bond funding, but we received, in the budget, the budget that just passed, in July, we received $50 million from the 2021 state budget, of which 25 million, half of that first, will be released on January 3rd. Our board approved those guidelines a couple of weeks ago, but we're holding rollout until January 3rd, when the boundary expansion happens so that the portion of Trinity County that will be included in our service area will have access to those funds. So again, that's $25 million, January 3rd. The focus of that program is forest health and fire recovery. There's a variety of different project types that can be applied for under that grant program. And my colleague here, Andy Fristensky, is our Field Operations and Grants Division Chief. We, he and Tully Potts, who is our current North Subregion Area Representative, she's based in Mount Shasta in Siskiyou County, she'll be serving your region, she'll be developing projects, and everything that we do, ultimately, projects come to staff, they get evaluated, staff makes recommendations to our board, and the board ultimately makes the decisions. So $50 million, 25 million in January, we're going to bring a new set of guidelines to our board in June that will release the second tranche of funding. We also have $11 million in climate resilience funding. It says climate resilience, but really, this $11 million supports more broadly the Conservancy's mission, so under the Watershed Improvement Program, vibrant record and tourism, strategically land conservation, and resilient Sierra Nevada communities. Those are the programs that primarily will be funded through the broader climate package. I'm happy to answer more questions about that if you have them. My contact information is here. Andy's contact information is also in the package, the printout of the package that we shared with all of you, as well as Tully Potts, who's the North Area Subregion Representative, as I mentioned, who will be the primary point of contact for developing projects. So we're really thrilled to have Trinity County as part of the area that we serve, or at least the portion that will be added to our boundary. I feel like the issues with fire and recovery and communities, they're all, they're similar to the issues that we face across this Sierra Nevada. We know that it's very different from the Northern Sierra to the Southern Sierra in terms of the specifics, but fire is a major issue. Fire recovery, as it relates to sort of the triple bottom line of communities, how do you look at that? How do you respond to it? That's all very similar. And so we do our best to listen and to respond where counties and communities are and to be really good partners, and so that's our goal. So I'm happy to answer any questions any of you might have.
Yep, start down here on the left.
Actually, I just have one, and thank you for coming, and it's very exciting to me that we have the ability to get into this. So you talked about rotating. Does each district rotate their supervisors, or is that just an old age?
So each subregion, the six subregions that I shared with you, is made up of three or four counties. The counties that make up that subregion decide amongst themselves what the rotation will be.
That there is a rotation.
There is a rotation, and each term for a local elected is a two-year term. So it's about eight board meetings.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, so right now, we don't have a supervisor from Trinity County.
Correct.
And you'll be looking for one now that we're in there?
We will, but as we understand it, there's only one, so, sorry, we will add, you only one district that will be added to our region, so Supervisor Grove's. What we'll do is we have a year to look at the North Subregion, which is now huge and many more counties than we ultimately want it to be. We have currently, Aaron Alba from Lassen County is serving on our board. His terms earns, ends a year from now. We need to bring Trinity County into the rotation, into the conversation with the other counties. So that's a conversation we'll have at some point next year. And then we'll see what the current lineup is and where we can fit Trinity County in. So yes, that was a long answer to a short question, but yes, we ultimately will build you all into the rotation with the other counties.
What type of watershed work have you done already?
Oh, well, like I said, our Watershed Improvement Program, one of the biggest pillars, because we think it's integral to rural community, forest, forested community health is, forest and watershed health, so fuel reduction projects, wood processing infrastructure investments, you know, just fuel breaks and meadow restoration and just you name it. If it's forest health with $120 million, there's been a variety of projects over the years. And we're happy to share project lists and project categories with you if you are interested in more specifics.
Do you work with any of the other entities around here, Trinity River Restoration, Ubau, UROX, with any of their projects as far as restoration or Trinity or trip rehabilitation goes?
So we have not worked anywhere in Trinity County and won't until the 3rd or January 1, when your region gets added to our region. And the reason for that is we cannot by statute work outside of our boundary. So tribal partners are big partners. They're important partners to us. We do try and work with tribes. Restoration is a big element of what we do. When we think about fires and fire recovery, reforestation, stabilization, hillside stabilization, that type and kind of stuff is all stuff that we work on. I don't think I'm getting to your question, though.
No, that's, I understand.
Okay.
Now, I was thinking forward as I know it on our map.
So Liam, the basis behind the map that they drew is the watershed of Trinity Lake and into Lewiston Lake, and so that this is part of the water supply to the inland area. That's why we got brought in. So they're really, except for the fact that it puts more water in Trinity Lake, it doesn't have an impact on the salmon.
No, I'm just hoping to get more water in Trinity Lake, honestly. That would be my concern, seeing the map, that would be definitely my concern, trying to get as much water in Trinity Lake as we can, which would make a healthier forest tributary example.
Just to be clear, too, we had nothing to do with the boundary definition as it was proposed and passed. That was Senator Dally and his staff. Senator Dally served on our board when he was on his local supervisor board back in the beginning of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. I think he understands the type and kind of work that we do and the value we bring to rural communities, and so there was another effort that was going on in the legislature that had to do with these watersheds that serve the state and Central Valley Water Project. And I think from his perspective, what I understand is that from his perspective, he felt like, don't create another state entity to oversee the region, just look at what you've already got and the people who are doing good work. So it's, I think, an honor to his time on our board and the work that we do in region.
Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, our next presentation is item 1.3, received presentation from U.S. Forest Service regarding plans for post-fire wildfire recovery in the Chastis Trinity National Forest, no fiscal impact.
Yeah, thank you.
Chris Losi?
Good morning.
How are you doing?
Good, good morning, board members. My name is Chris Losi. I'm the district ranger for the South Fork Management Unit, which is southern part of Trinity County. And I wanted to first lead off by mentioning that Rachel Verkinger, new forest supervisor, has asked that Tara Jones and I, Tara being the district ranger for the Attorney for Management Unit, the northern part of Trinity County, that she and I and Rachel kind of take turns presenting to you folks. So if you folks are interested in hearing, we're very interested in presenting to you on a regular basis, monthly basis, basically, if we can fit that in. We had Rachel presented to you folks in October. Last week, there was this, last month, there was a scheduling conflict, but back again in December, so hopefully we can do this regularly. This is going to be a little bit longer, hopefully not too long, but there's a lot of stuff to share, and I'll try to go fast, but you can always ask me to fill in. First of all, I wanted to welcome you Supervisor Brown to the South Fork Management Unit. It looks like with the new drawing of the district boundaries, you will be representing Higham Palm and portions of South Fork Post Mountain, which is encompassed and surrounded by the South Fork Management Unit, so welcome. I look forward to working with you. The agenda, as the agenda mentions, I'm here to talk about post-fire restoration work, but I want to just put a little mention on a couple of the things that aren't directly related to the recent fires. One is that we are still working, we are really close to finalizing the Trinity County Collaborative's pilot project. We, I anticipate that we will be able to begin the formal objection process in January, which then begins a 45-day objection period, followed by a 45-day objection resolution period, but by that point, we really are getting quite close and hoping to get implementation starting in the summer to fall, more lengthy fall. And that project is a project put together by the Trinity County Collaborative to build the fuel rigs along Indian Valley Road, Butter Creek Roads connecting Hay Fork and Higham Palm. So they're strategic, they're important, and hoping to get that put together. That should be signed this late spring and delivered in the fall.
Is that the 42 project or whatever? Has it been called the 42 or the older 42 or something?
There's a first 48, but that's on the Zix reverse.
Okay.
Is that, is that what you think? Yeah? No, it's, I mostly generally call it the pilot. The only thing we call it is the pilot project. It's two roads, about 3,000 acres of field break along those roads. Also up here closer to where I live, in Weaverville, the Weaverville Community Forest Project is continuing to plug along. We've got some good trail work going on that, it's pausing because of the wet weather, but it's still in process. And as you can see, there have been prescribed fire, we're doing controlled burns around Weaverville. So moving on to fire recovery, again, just getting away from this year itself, the August fire recovery, we're still working on that. You know, biggest fire in state history. We just, in the last few days, learned that we got another bid for a salvage sale down around Forest Glen. So that's another 200 acres and about 11 million board feet cut around the Forest Glen area that was planned as part of the August fire recovery project, phase one. So that's kind of a win, and that's going to be a lot of, good amount of land, good amount of salvage coming out of there. The phase two project, which is up around the Red Mountain area, is getting close, looking to have a signature on the planning in the spring, late winter, early spring. We were able to capitalize on the work done by the phase one project to get a lot of surveys done, and so moving, moving along well with that. That's a project with fuel rigs and prescribed fire, but likely no timber component because of the age of the logs and the value, they're not that valuable. Now, moving on to the fires of this year, first want to let you everybody know that, you know, we're still, we're still planning to do that emergency response, the that emergency response, the, the, the emergency recovery work. And I know emergency, you know, it doesn't always, it isn't always as fast as we'd like, but we are, we are still planning to continue work on what we call suppression repair, which is cleaning up the dozer lines and the fire lines that we created. The bear work, which is trying to ensure that there's, trying to prevent land movement, landslides. And what we call the bar work, which is trying to recover some of the burned infrastructure like campgrounds and things. So that is all ongoing. You may not notice a lot of work right now because it's the middle of winter. And then, you know, our equipment is limited to where it can go and in wet weather, but that is still going on. Now, so the last step really is what are we doing long-term in those fire footprints? I'm, I'm pleased to announce that yesterday, the Deputy Forest Supervisor signed a scoping letter which initiates the planning process for a project on the southern edge of Wildwood. It's a up to 3,000 acre project to, to put in fuel rigs, salvage, prescribed fire. We're still working on the design. We're planning to have a meeting in January with the public. We had a meeting in December, a couple mill representatives, it was open to the public at the time though, we had some mill representatives and, and the Harry Ford Watershed Center attended, but it was open to the public. And we talked about options for fuel reduction on the southern edge of Wildwood. That is part of the McFarland Fire, because the McFarland Fire burned up to the edge of Wildwood. So what we're looking to do there is respond to the fire, respond to all the fuel loading around that community, trying to turn that into a reduced fuel area, increase our defensible space, increase the likelihood that, that we can protect that community in the future when those trees start falling, as they're going to do, and start adding to that fuel load. So we want to get as many of those trees out as we can in strategic areas before they fall on their own and, and become, you know, just, just, you know, there's no economic value. So we want to get some of that economic value out before we, before it completely rots so that we can reduce the fuel around Wildwood. That's, that's the first of the, the projects. At the same time, we're starting, actually with regional help from the regional office, we're starting what's called, we've just started what's called a rapid assessment of the other fires, well, actually the rest of the McFarland Fire outside of Wildwood, as well as the Monument River Fire. They've got staff from around the region coming in and helping identify where some of the greatest needs are and some of the opportunities are for reforestation, fire recovery, fuel reduction. And so these are going on at the same time. So it's a really busy, it's a really, we've taken on a really busy, you know, a lot of work. But, you know, we recognize there's a lot of impact of the fires, you know. I live in the community, there's a lot of impact of these fires in the community. We want to do what we can with our resources to, with our staff and our financial resources to respond to these fires and to mitigate any, to mitigate as many of those hazards that it's created as possible. Thank you.
Thank you Chris.
Chris, I have a question. On the 3,000 acre parcel over there by Wildwood, is there any strategy in place to break that down into smaller groupings? Maybe two, 300 acre plots and use those as multiple fire rigs?
Yeah, so really, we had, so really the question, we, after the fire, we had some, some, a little bit of a window to get some foresters out into that area. Because the McFarland Fire was contained, Monument Fire was still, was still going. So I, I asked my foresters to go out there and take a look. And so what they did was they really kind of just did a lot of ground truthing out there around Wildwood. And they looked at what opportunities were for using timber harvest as a way to get the wood out of the forest. What we've done now is put together a scoping letter which initiates planning in that area, officially initiates planning. We are really looking for input and, input and ideas on how to make this into a manageable project or a manageable set of projects. What we've done though is we've kind of basically figured out what the puzzle pieces are, but we haven't quite put them together into a final design. And so one of the things we've talked about is, is nibbling off sections. I, I imagine that one of the ways that, I don't, so I, I really doubt that what we will end up with is 3,000 acres of timber harvest, that's, that's not where we're, we're talking. Timber harvest is one component that I'd like to see us do as part of a larger plan. So that may involve having multiple decisions over the next few years. It may involve having the highest priority treated now and then we'll go to other higher priorities across the county. But, but what we've done now really is just identify a lot of the options out there so that we can kind of piece them together. And really hoping to do that by, again, in January, hoping to come up with a final design of how we're going to piece together all these options in this 3,000 acre area. What we've been able to do, that we haven't been able to do in other parts of the west side, is we've been able to get people on the ground looking at things like where is there timber? Where is there timber that can be, that, that has value? Where is it accessible to be moved, you know, to be logged? As a component of a fuel reduction project that's designed to protect Wildwood. So not sure, hopefully that wasn't too long of an answer to a relatively short question.
Also a question to that is, if you do break it up into puzzle pieces, we'll say, would it not give you someone an advantage in timber sales on some of those pieces to find out, kind of test the market, what goes, what doesn't, not making them buy large chunks instead of smaller pieces?
It certainly could. That's definitely an advantage. A challenge though is when you do planning, you need to consider, you know, connected actions likely future actions. So we don't want to break it, I would be, I wouldn't want to break it up so much that, you know, you, I wouldn't want to break it up so much that you're, it looks like we're trying to, you know, minimize the impacts, right? Because that's not the goal, right? So we, we need to take enough of a holistic approach to it so that we can look at, you know, these additive effects of multiple, multiple actions. And if we, you know, it, it becomes challenging to do a, you know, a five-phase project because, because of the connected future actions. So, so that's the other side of it. Certainly putting out a small, couple hundred acre project has appeal and can probably get done faster, but we don't want to foreclose what we can do in the future by decisions we make now and we, we want to acknowledge that we're going to be doing things into the future. So, but that's all part of the discussion and, you know, I think we've been talking with the mill and we know that we have a timeline. If we're going to use, which we would like to use, commercial timber harvest as a tool to get fuels reduced, we know that we have a, a timeline and we want to make sure that we, that we meet that timeline. Otherwise, we can't use that tool.
So with all that being encompassed, having a quicker EIS or shorter one would give you expediting time to get wood to the mill that's in good shape? Over waiting a year or two to get?
Yeah, no, we're, we're not, so to be clear, first of all, we're hoping to do, we, it's my plan to do, to do most of this work under the categorical exclusion model. It's my plan that, that, that if there is to be timber harvest, which I think there will be, that that component will be prepared by the spring, early summer. Getting people out there, being able to get loggers on the ground in June. We've been told that, we know that that's a, a goal. We're going to design the project so that what we can get done, you know, it's my plan and ultimately it's not my final call, but, because it is going to be a Forest Supervisor decision, but it's my plan to package as much as we can before that deadline of, you know, early, early summer so that we get that ready. And so if we can't get to do the analysis for, you know, if we get 700 acres analyzed, then, you know, by May 1, then my hope is, okay, we will make a decision on that. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yeah, because we're limited, right? We've got, we have some real staffing challenges. We've, we've lost a bunch of people. On the other hand, it looks like through the infrastructure bill and, and various granting mechanisms, although you don't cover our, they don't cover our area yet, but we could change that hopefully. You know, we might be able to get some contractors, some agreements. The Watershed Center, Hay Fork Watershed Center is very interested in helping. So there's going to be a lot of things to, we're going to be thinking about a lot of things in the next few months to see how much resource, how many resources we can put towards this project. At the same time, we have, we recognize there's a need to do work in not just the McFarland Fire footprint, right? So there's the Monument Fire, there's River Fire. And so, so it's going to be a real challenge. So there's a challenge to make sure the resources are spread out and to make sure that we can get something done in time to, to get a product out of it. Because that's, because that really helps us meet our goals if we can get, it helps, it really helps, because this is not about, this is not about timber. This is about using timber as a way to reduce the fuels and landscape. But making sure that we don't lose that window of time.
Thank you Chris.
Thank you.
So I have a few other questions.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions because of some issues I've had with the response after the August fire. One of my main concerns is, and the August fire, all the scoping, everything, county roads were not included. And that's something that I think you guys need to really focus on, is the hazard tree removal or on, on adjacent to county roads. Because I know Six Rivers, they said, okay, well, we can sell that timber to the county as salvage sale and they can deal with it. But it's federal-owned land, except for most of the county road easements are very small. And so the Forest Service owns that timber. And I think that that would be beneficial for everybody if you use, I mean, if you go with the categorical, categorical exemption, that's great. Whatever you have to do, but to get as much of the timber along the county roads as you can, because the county can't afford to remove it. If there's no value in it, it just becomes a headache for DOT to remove it when it falls down. That's my main concern, so I'm good.
Right. Well, thanks a lot Chris, appreciate it.
I've got a question.
Of course you do.
So on the river complex, which is now in their district oversight. So we probably, and I'm not sure, I don't think I've seen a, an actual number, but let's just say there's 100 miles of trails that got destroyed or damaged or trees or, you know, all different levels. You talked about repairing campgrounds, does that fall under the same repair priority in the trails in, in the Alps? I would say that from my viewpoint, that's, even though it's burnt, it still takes you to some beautiful lakes and it's going to be an interesting look at. And we, it is an integral part of our recreation area, especially in North Lake. So is there a plan, do we have a, a plan or let me stop speaking while you speak?
Sure, sure. I know that, you know, that, that infrastructure repair, which includes, you know, trails and campgrounds, is part of that, isn't really part, is actually part of that first group of things that I mentioned, the, the suppression repair, the bear, the bar. Your district Supervisor Groves is not on it, your district Supervisor District is not on my Forest Service District, so I can't speak specifically to what's going up in that neck of the woods. I know that, and, and the South Fork doesn't have anywhere near the amount of recreation infrastructure that the, the Trinity River Management Unit does. I do know that we're, we're thinking about that. I know that, that campgrounds has come up, burnt infrastructure at the campgrounds has definitely come up. I know there are funding sources, I know that we're looking at that. I also know that our recreation staff has really been challenged with staffing issues. So I know that, I know that, I know that Tara, who will probably be speaking with you next month, cares a lot about these, you know, has, she has more knowledge of and cares a lot about making sure that these campgrounds get repaired. I can say, you know, it's slow going on the August fire. We're just now getting the, you know, some of that stuff rebuilt. There's a Scott Flat Campground, I don't know if you know about that Supervisor Frager, the Scott Flat Campground. We just got some boards to, to repair a fence. They were all infested, so we had to burn them. You can talk to Joe Morio. So it is sometimes slow going, but we've got, we are, you know, if you look at what we've been doing on the August fire, I think you can see that we are trying to repair these campgrounds. It's my hope that we'll be faster this time around than we were on the August fire. But I, but we're definitely aware of that and do intend to repair that, you know, staffing and funding, you know, dependent on staffing and funding. That is of course a challenge.
Thank you. All right. Thank you Jason.
Thank you so much.
All right, our next item is item 1.4. Receive a presentation from Trinity County Resource Conservation District regarding the Trinity County Fire Safety Council. I don't see a specific contact listed on there.
Good morning.
Hey Amelia, how are you?
Oh, good, how are you?
All right, the floor is yours.
Wait one second while I pull up my flowers, thank you. All right, everybody see what I'm seeing on PowerPoint? Awesome. Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Amelia Flight. I'm the Watershed Program Manager for the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. And I'm also the Coordinator for the Trinity County Fire Safety Council. I'm here today to talk about some new funding that is county funding from the Cal Fire CCI Fund through the California Fire State Council, which is going to fund countywide coordination across the whole entire state for the next 18 months. And so Trinity County was lucky enough to receive some of this funding. So first, what is the Trinity County Fire Safety Council, what do we do? So we seek to approve the cooperation and coordination of all aspects of wildfire management in Trinity County. So we are, we operate everywhere from District 1 through 5. And we also work across some county borders with our partners to work on multi-jurisdictional projects as well, with Humble Tahima Glen Fire State Council just to cover all our bases. And so our council meets every Thursday, every fourth Thursday at 1:00 PM. Right now, we're meeting via Zoom. You can find our meeting information on firesafetrinity.org. And our next meeting is January 27. We welcome all members of the public, so if you're interested in learning more about it or joining us, please come. So who are we? So we are a large group of many agencies throughout Trinity County, as well as private residents that come together for the betterment of wildfire management. And so bringing together many of our partners, we're able to tap into many different funding sources from federal, state and local, as well as working with our private citizens that contribute their own money towards the fire safety initiatives in Trinity County. So here you can see our federal partners, our county partners, and all of our local law enforcement departments are contributing and participating within the Fire State Council. So why is the Trinity County Fire Safety Council important? So we were funded, or founded in 1999 out of some of the early fires to do one of the risk assessments, which was the original Community Wildfire Protection Plan for the nation. So we're very proud to have that as part of our history. And so we have gone through our Community Wildfire Protection Plan process four times now. And so we just finished our 2020 Community Wildfire Protection Plan update, which covers all of Trinity County. We are currently working with the Southern Trinity folks to update their section of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which as most of you know, burned in the August complex. And then we are reaching out to Downriver as well to work on updating some of the sections in the Monument Fire. And more of what the Fire State Council does, it contains 13 fire-wise communities in Trinity County. either doing fuel reduction, educational meetings, evacuation planning, all of these kinds of events throughout the year, every year, in each of these 13 communities. And so Trinity County Fire State Council has been the leader in coordinating and ensuring the reporting and all of this management is going into place to keep our firewise communities intact. And so what has, have, has the Fire State Council brought to Trinity County? Well, in the last year, just the Watershed Center and Trinity County Resource Conservation District alone have brought $8.4 million in fuel reduction, even education and planning, and firewise work to Trinity County, just this year. That's fantastic. It's probably one of our banner years. And what do we use that money for? So you can see here, we, we use it for tipping, for scrub burning, and also for some of our education and outreach, as well as our planning. And so what does that mean? So that means that we're working on our social media, that means we're working on our Wildfire Awareness Day and promotions during Wildfire Awareness Month. Now, in 2020 and 2021, we were a bit hampered with those events because of COVID, but we're really looking to bring them back in 2022, as long as we still don't have COVID mitigations that we need to jump around. We provide commissions to the Trinity Journal with their living with wildfire conditions, and also throughout the year. We host many community and neighborhood meetings, completing neighborhood assessments, working on neighborhood improvement projects, shaded fuel breaks, as well as defensible space work. We are bringing back the Big Red Trap Program, which is a legacy program where local volunteer fire departments have gone out to private residences and discussed defensible space improvements, road improvements, for access for fire engines, and also the Blue Dot Program, which is identifying water sources throughout the county for firefighters. And again, maintaining our firewise communities. In our coordination and planning, we host the monthly meetings. We also coordinate quite frequently with the Fire Chiefs Association, the Trinity County Disaster Council, and Board Supervisors, as well as working with many of our other local partners off-line. The Fire State Council also helps to support the NECA and CEWA compliance for the implementation project. And so what is implementation? That's the Community Tipping Program that Trinity County RCB and Watershed Research and Training Center implement, defensible space improvements, roadside and ridge top fuel breaks, landscape treatments, either by hand or by notification, and also for sky burning, including pilot burning and broadcast burning. So all of our partners work collaboratively to bring this together. Trinity County Fire State Council is special in that we operate a little bit differently than all of the other Fire State Councils. We operate under an MOU rather than a rural 501(c)(3) or other special districts. We really like operating that way, because we're able to bring everybody to the table to work collaboratively. And so we really love how clear that is. So this county coordinator funding was eligible to all counties in the state of California, and it was awarded to Trinity County, to the Trinity County RCB, to be the coordinators for the Trinity County Fire State Council for the next 18 months. The goal of the program is to educate, encourage, and develop countywide collaboration and coordination of various wildfire mitigation groups operating within the county, specifically within the state responsibility areas, as it is funded by Cal Fire. We are specifically set up, and a great way to work on this, because we already have the base of infrastructure. Many of the other counties that have received this funding are either forming their own countywide Fire State Council now, and hiring coordinators now. And so we are ahead of the game, as we've been doing this for the last 20 years, and we're going to keep it going. And so what are our responsibilities as far as the coordinators? And so what we're going to be looking at is we share weekly onto our social media accounts for firewise investigation, as well as updates to some of the metrics. You know, everybody loves our fire history map, so we'll be working on those, updating our website, and continuing to promote our ongoing events, and collaborating with our local partners. Monthly, we're going to be meeting and collaborating with our N Pressley, the Trinity County OES manager. We're going to be meeting with the Chiefs Association, the Disaster Department, Council, and we'll come to the Board of Supervisors meetings as needed, based on the agenda. We anticipate hosting one to three community or neighborhood workshop a month, and applying for additional funding, which is, yesterday I was working on an evacuation planning grant. And so we're trying to continue to bring in a sustainable source of funding for firewise planning and education throughout the county. So annually, we hope to host a Trinity County Wildfire Prevention Day Fair. So in the past, we wanted to pilot the project for the first time in Beaverville, and then anticipate moving it for the second year to Hayford. We will participate at the Trinity County Fair. We will continue to renew the firewise community certification. We anticipate attending community and California Fire State Development webinars to help bring in other ideas for community connections and education. And we also anticipate acting as a liaison during wildfire incidents with the large incident management teams, and connecting the incident management teams with the local resources that the Fire State Council, the county, and other local entities have spent time and money in planning, and just helping connect, provide maps, connect with the local volunteer fire departments, ensure that Trinity County has representation, appropriate representation, and that our needs are being heard. And so how do we anticipate what our outcomes will be? So this, we're going to continue to work with the state, federal, and local management in our coordination meetings. We anticipate developing a minimum of 25 new resident wildfire awareness welcome packages. And so we anticipate disseminating quite a few more, but this is our baseline, and we're already in work to work with State Farm and also some of the local realtors to deliver these wildfire information packets to new residents, new homeowners. And so we are also developing a Trinity County Fire State Council brochure, which will host many good, a lot of good information for Trinity County residents, as well as providing the specific Cal Fire and the California Fire State Council and other great resources developed throughout our network. We anticipate hosting 20 neighborhood level events, and so this really to encourage neighborhood commitment and neighborhood inclusion in development of Community Wildfire Protection Plan, but also encouraging them to take action and take ownership of maintaining their own roads, maintaining their own defensible space, and really looking to partner neighborhoods to facilitate this work on each other's land. Specifically, if a senior isn't available to doing the work, hopefully finding a neighbor that's willing and able to support that senior or other forms of networking and relationship building in the neighborhood. We anticipate hosting a minimum of 10 community events, and so these are annual firewise community events. These will also be partnered with some of the CWTP improvements and development meetings. We anticipate hosting the Trinity County Wildfire Awareness Day Fair, being part of the Trinity County Fair, and then also supporting our volunteer fire departments to contact 75 private landowners to the firewise assessment. And so 75 is what can be funded through this resources, and maybe that sounds low, but we are already in the process of receiving more funding potentially from the RAC to supplement this and add more residence, add capacity to contact more residents. And so our, our final outcome from this project will be to document a project through a photo story. And so our measure of success are to increase the local resident attendance at the Trinity County Fire State Council meetings. We are very excited to see the Lower Trinity Prescribed Burn Association participating, some vibrants returning to the Willow Creek Fire State Council and participation in our meetings. And so we hope to expand that, so there are Trinity areas looking to form their own Fire State Council, and they've been participating in our monthly Fire State Council meetings. So really trying to get the word out there that it's an open meeting to everybody, and encourages many people as interested to attend. We're going to revisit land under contact, so from the Big Red Trap Program, just to determine how much of that work was implemented, the suggestions to change the fence screens, or to remove a tree, to see what our impact is, and also work with the neighborhood groups as well. We're going to look at the value of the local planning documents during incident management team presence, and we're going to gain that based on the feedback we're receiving from the teams, as well as from our local partners. For some of you that haven't seen some of the work that we've done in the past, we've created a map book for all of the volunteer fire departments, which identify every resident within their district. And so those have been provided to the structured defense teams in the past, specifically during the river and the Monument Fire, which has been essential in providing those out-of-area resources with the information they need. And for us, we know that some of the roads, it doesn't look like somebody lives down that road, but really at the very end, there's a house that has a lovely family living up there. And so providing these maps to those out-of-area resources really helps refine the area that they're covered, and is covering, and ensure that they have all the information that they need. We also hope to increase the Trinity County Fire State Council Facebook page to 500 followers. We're over 400, so we're, we're looking to boost that up. We anticipate continuing to develop a sustainable funding for management coordination, coordination and education of the Fire State Council, so that's just continuing to apply and bring in more funds. And then we hope to engage 5% of the Trinity County residents. And so that's approximately 805 individuals. As referenced, the 2020 Community Wildfire Protection Plan update engaged less than 1%. So we're just trying to get more people involved and, and connect with more people. And so who's going to do this work? So I will be the primary Fire State Council Coordinator, and Maya Williams will be our supplemental Fire State Council Coordinator. So Maya has been working as a education and outreach coordinator for the Trinity County Fire State Council for over a year, and she primarily works as the Trinity River Restoration Program Outreach, but she'll be coming over and assisting with the Fire State Council. So we will split the roles approximately 50/50, and that will be able to provide us coverage, as well as supporting our other roles within the Fire State Council and our other duties of the district. Supporting staff and partners, so the Trinity County Fire State Council Chair is Carol Fall, the Assistant Chief at Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department. The Vice Chair is Todd Corbett at the Beaverville Fire Department. The GIS Manager at the Trinity County RCB is Nate Wesley, and our IT and Webmaster Eric Flickwire will also support this programming, as well as the Trinity County OES Manager at Pressley. And so we're very excited to use this fund and to help share our message and collaborate and connect with the residents of Trinity County. Do you have any questions?
That's a great presentation. Any members have questions? You did so well, there's no questions. Thank you so much for that.
No, thank you.
That's really thorough, that is a lot of money, that's something to be really proud of. So we do, we do get that net working out there. All right, with that, we can go to our next presentation, which is 1.5, Receiver Presentation from Assembly Member Jim Wood's office regarding his end of the year report.
Yes, good, good morning, Chair Brown, Supervisors, CAO Kuhn, staff. It's great to be here this morning. My name is Erin Dunn, and I am the Field Representative for Assembly Member Jim Wood. I cover Trinity, Humboldt, and Delmar counties, and my office is in Yarica. Assembly Member Wood appreciates having the opportunity to deliver this year-end wrap-up. However, he's unable to be here in person and asked me to speak on his behalf. We faced many challenges this past year, COVID being one of them. However, it's not the only one. Wildfires will continue to be a reality and have already had a tragic impact on many individuals and families, as well as devastated many communities throughout the state, including Trinity County. Assembly Member Wood remains committed to working with Cal OES to be sure that, in the case of wildfires in our region, the needs of our rural communities and counties are heard. Early October rains brought some relief to California, as well as a respite to our firefighters. Broadband access remains a problem, especially in rural areas like the five counties he represents. There is a $7 million investment in this year's budget to develop an open access middle mile throughout the state, and help with last mile deployment to unserved and underserved communities. At this point, we haven't seen projects in our area chosen for build-out, but we're still in the early days, and he is committed to fighting for our fair share. Homelessness, housing, substance abuse, and mental illness continue to plague us. In addition to bringing personal tragedy, he knows it places a significant burden on communities and counties. 2022-23 state budget revenues are expected to be good, and many will be asking for funding as a result. Federal infrastructure dollars will help improve our transportation issues, and also help us expand broadband. However, we know that rural areas often get the short end of the stick, and he remains an advocate for rural equity. Assembly Member Wood had some legislative successes this year. COVID and resulting protocols in the Capitol affected the legislative process. Leadership asked legislators, just as they were asked in 2020, to scale back the number of bills they authored. This year, he introduced 19 bills, which were ultimately trimmed to 16, with eight being signed and only one vetoed. He is reconsidering the seven that did not move forward, and I will talk about those in a moment. Here are some that were signed into law. AB 1311 came about because there were no recycling certified redemption centers in Humboldt, Trinity, Sierra, or Alpine County. The original California Beverage Container and Recycling Liter Reduction Act has never provided the flexibility to communities struggling to make CRV redemption centers viable. He worked closely with Humboldt Waste Management Authority and the community to give them the flexibility they needed. As he says, he often felt like David fighting Eliot, even though he was only asking for modest changes, like modifying the hours of operation. The law now allows certified recycling centers to operate on an alternative schedule, less than the currently required 30 hours per week. It allows them to operate by appointment, and it exempts dealers delivering empty beverage containers to a recycling center or processor from the daily load limits, and authorizes the use of reverse vending machines and backdrop recycling centers. There's still a lot of work to be done, and it makes the CR, to make the CRV program work, and at least two of his colleagues will have bills that attempt a more comprehensive fix in the upcoming year. AB 41 specifically addresses the need for broadband, and was a follow-up to his legislation a few years ago to increase middle mile deployment by reinforcing Caltrans' Dig 1's policy. He co-authored and supported three other bills to improve California Advanced Services Fund, and was named to the Governor's Middle Mile Advisory Committee, which is charged with monitoring the development and construction of the middle mile. AB 817 authorizes the Director of California's Department of Fish and Wildlife to transition the calendar-based fishing license to one that is valid a full 365 days from the date of purchase. The law also authorizes the department to create an option to display a sport fishing license electronically on a mobile device. This should be available beginning 2023. It did take some time, but the Department of Fish and Wildlife support, once they, to get their support, but once they better understood the reasons why licenses were declining, he was able to make things happen. He continued successful efforts to maintain a $250 million per year for wildfire prevention efforts, and even more state funding has been provided to increase these efforts. AB 9 creates a new branch within the Office of the State Fire Marshal that will focus exclusively on community fire prevention, preparedness, and mitigation efforts of Cal Fire. This is a significant shift in how we battle our wildfire crisis. This will create a new entity, and it took quite an effort and working with many stakeholders to break through the current structure. to break through the current structure so that we could move in this direction. It will move eight existing programs and duties currently spread throughout CAL FIRE to this new branch. This fall, he chaired several Assembly Health Committee informational hearings on critical issues, including continuing his commitment to ensure quality care to residents in nursing homes and looking at ways to improve Medi-Cal and addressing mental health challenges. In his visits throughout the district, limited as they have been because of COVID, he was on the ground with first responders, the U.S. Forest Service, and CAL FIRE at the wildfires, and has spent some time with both CAL FIRE and the tribes to better understand how we can benefit from prescribed burns and other wildfire preventative practices. Legislation he reintroduced, is reintroducing in 2022. AB 1130 creates the Office of Healthcare Affordability. Over the years, many of his efforts to contain healthcare costs have been signed into law. However, several of those laws immediately resulted in lawsuits, and those in the process, again, they slowed the legal system by the pandemic. This work to contain healthcare costs must continue, and the Office of Healthcare Affordability is critical to that process. We have to have a system that tracks healthcare costs and can help us understand how those costs affect patient outcomes. He worked with the governor's administration and experienced significant pushback from many of the stakeholders for the for-profit healthcare arena, but he's not giving up. Issues he is researching and considering for 2022 legislative session: more follow-up legislation on nursing home licensure and reform, issues on mental health. We need to improve the system to help people with mental illness and their families while at the same time protecting people's civil liberties. In closing, Assemblymember Wood and our staff wish all of you the best during the holiday season. And if you have any questions or comments you would like me to take back to the assembly member, I will be glad to do that. And if you need my contact information, Emma has that, and will be happy to share that with you. Thanks for letting me share this morning.
Thank you, Erin. Any questions from the board?
I just had one. I can't even remember what meeting I was in, and the Assemblyman was there. And he talked about, well, his district wasn't hit hard. There was only a quarter million acres in his district. And I went, and he said something like, "The fire that nobody heard of." Well, we had two other fires, so the number really is closer to 350,000, so you can relay that on to me.
I will.
Please relay on from us that have a happy holidays, and we appreciate it.
I will do that. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, thank you about the fishing licenses. As a fisherperson, I appreciate that. About the recycling part of that, I'm not sure about reverse recycling vending machines. I don't know what that is.
So do you like...
Is it new, or am I behind schedule?
It's been implemented elsewhere in the state. I haven't seen it myself because we haven't had it up here. They've only been able to do it, I think, through special programs that they've had where they can try things for a couple of years. But this made it so that everyone is able to do that. And reverse vending machines, I think, is where you put the cans in and get the money out, as opposed to putting the money in and getting something back.
They have one in Redding at Walmart. So a lot of the small units are going inside of grocery stores, and then they get a voucher for that grocery store, like a good one. So it builds incentive to bring your bottles back, put it in, and then you get a discount on your groceries.
So I might best to take a whole pickup load and stuff it in time.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, next, that concludes our presentation. So we're actually going to go to public comment now. Sorry for the flip-flopping. So if there are any members of the public in the boardroom wishing to comment, now would be an appropriate time.
Hi, I'm board supervisor. My name's Marissa, and I'm an IHSS care worker. And I'm the member leader in Trinity County for the IHSS. Hi, Liam.
How are you?
Wonderful. I just wanted you guys to know who I am. Like I said, I'm the member leader here in Trinity County. That means I'm a member, I work for the IHSS. My daughter is my client. If there's ever any issues, like with our IHSS members who are, like with anything, they need help with timesheets, they need help with, you know, whatever the case is, I'm pretty much the one that they go to. My daughter has quadriplegia, cerebral palsy. She just had a trache removed, and she eats through her tummy. So she's my client, and I work for her full-time. I also am a full-time student, and I'm a mama, a very proud mama. And I do believe I spoke with you, Jill Cox, and we shared a very loving moment, so I thank you for that. But like I said, I just wanted you guys to know who I am. Sorry, I'm a little shaken. I don't speak in public very often. I just wanted you guys to know who I am, and if you guys could just be very kind when you consider whatever we have to offer you. And that's pretty much it. Do you guys have any questions for me? No? Okay, awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for your participation.
Everyone following me?
Thank you, you too.
Is there any additional public comment from within the board chambers? If not, then we'll go check on the Zoom. If there's any public comment on Zoom, I'm gonna...
I have no raised hands.
Hey, I'll... Can I go?
Yep, go for it.
Okay. My name is Steven DiMarco. I live in Hayfork. I'm a cultivator licensed. And I just wanted to bring to the board's attention... Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if everybody knows this, but the Department of Cannabis Control just passed an emergency regulation allowing for state license fee waivers for equity holders. And if you read the emergency regulations, they specifically list Trinity County as one of 16 counties out of 58 that have a disproportionately high amount of drug arrests per capita. So it specifically says Trinity County in this emergency regulation. Unfortunately, Trinity doesn't have any equity program. I would think this could be something that could be easily remedied upon review of the emergency regulations, because with an equity program, we'd be able to apply for speed waivers, which would allow us to save on our license fees, which range from $6,000 to $23,000. And that money would get reinvested, I would think, pretty quickly back into the community. A lot of the three programs have a qualifier, arrest, or conviction for a drug crime. I think it would be very easy for the board to figure out some kind of emergency order or program or some kind of just statute that you guys would be able to say, if you live in Trinity County and have had a prior drug arrest from 1980 to 2020, and you have a cannabis license, then according to the county, you have equity. Then that would allow us to go to the state and attest that we have equity when we renew, provide them the proof of our drug crime, our residence, and then they would waive our license fees, which for some of the farmers in this community could be the difference between them surviving this year or folding. So if you guys have any specific questions for me or any suggestions or ideas, I'd love to forward you some information about this or even send you just a proposed rule or something, because this could be a huge deal maker. Don't be remiss if you didn't know about this, because the state just issued this the first week of December, and they started accepting applications January 1st. There's $30 million. The license fee cap is $72,000, so you can see across the whole state. This money might get used up pretty quickly. So that's it.
All right, thank you for your comments. I will say that there is an equity program currently in the process of being developed by a third-party contract. So this process began almost a year ago. It does take approximately two years to complete. Other counties were able to do it faster because they had more revenue, bigger populations, or their own in-house economic development programs.
Is there something you guys might be able to do so we can take advantage of this potential fee waiver?
The program's in the process. I'll reach out and have them give an update sometime after the new year. So keep your eye on the board agendas.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I have no other raised hands. And to know your chats?
I'll give back to you, Chair.
Awesome. With that, we will close up public comment. We'll go into the consent calendar unless anyone needs to take a break.
These items include...
We'll just take a five-minute break. Yeah, it's never five minutes, so we're gonna make it a 10-minute break, so we'll come back at 10:50. I know.
He's very curious, like me.
No, that's me.
I know.
Yep.
We work to.
We're on the mind.
So.
There is. I'll be accused of-- See how close close it up.
It's a confidence maybe.
Either way, yeah, I feel-- It's tough.
All right, welcome back to the board supervisors' meeting. We are on the consent calendar. Currently, these items include routine non-controversial matters that will be acted upon the board by one rule of common motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board staff may request an item being pulled and considered separately. Are there any members of the public wishing to have an item pulled? Nope. Thank you for being here, though.
Well, thank you.
Are there any board members wishing to have an item pulled?
Yes.
2.9.
2.9, and I'll be pulling 2.16.
So if it's-- If 2.9 is pulled, does that mean you can't make comments?
You'll be able to make a comment on it, yes. All right. Yeah, 2.16 is a grant, and 2.9. Do you get a motion on the remaining items?
I'll take a motion to go through the remaining items.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion by Supervisor Frazier, second by Supervisor Groves. Supervisor Groves, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 2.16, adopt the resolution authorizing an application--
Uh, Chair, normally we go in number order. We like to do 2.9 first.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, one goes before nine.
Oh, yeah.
Almost.
2.9, Board of Supervisors, adopt a resolution supporting local control of school districts, businesses, and agencies to make decisions affecting their well-being, no physical impact. I believe the resolution was drafted by Supervisor Cox. And Keith, you have a question?
My question is more of a statement, clarification of my personal views before I go down this.
We have-- There was-- Drafted by myself and Jill.
Oh, okay. Jill was the contact listed. Okay.
I very much appreciate you guys taking this, and I tried to strong Jill, strongarm Jill into doing it, which she was more than happy to do. I-- The resolved part of this, I am fine, and I think it's great. I do have a little bit of heartburn over the wherethes. I just want it clear that I'm not personally making a constitutional challenge against-- Against the state. And this, to me, really boils down to state overreach, and that these are items that should be allowed to be decided at a local level. And as being, spending a lot of years on local school board, it's very frustrating to me that the state tells you, "You have to vote yes," but, hey, local board gets to control their school. So, to me, it's not about the Constitution. It's not about if COVID's good or bad. It is about that we have areas that are very different throughout the state. We were given testimony that one school district would have 40% of their children not attend school if the mandate had come down. And again, as an ex-school board member, the role of assault is to get the best education for the children as possible. And urging the state to allow this to be done at the local level is my, I'm staying with this. That said, I'm not asking this to be changed or thrown out or anything. I don't want to go along, but I just want that on the record, that that's my view.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Is there any public comment on this item?
Yeah.
All right, you got three minutes. Please take your name to the record.
Awesome. Oh, look at me there. Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Williams, Weaville. So, good morning, supervisors. It's a privilege to stand here to debate a resolution about taking a vaccine in the midst of a global pandemic. And today, I want to highlight the resolution's bastardization of our state constitution and eliminate some of the flaws in thought. And as a reminder, this is all part of the, in the context of our public school system. And attending a public school in our country and our state is predicated on having the following vaccines to promote the health of our students and community at large: tetanus, diphtheria, pertussis, which I have no idea what that is, chickenpox, polio, measles, mumps, rubella, and hepatitis B. But let's dig in. So, we mentioned here Article 1, Section 4 of the Constitution of the State of California. It does indeed guarantee the freedom of religion, but it also states that this liberty of conscience does not excuse acts that are licentious or inconsistent with the peace or safety of the state, ensuring that the children and adults of Trinity County are safe from the known harmful, and sometimes fatal, often long-term, lifelong effects of COVID. And that seems to fit within that exception. Next, the Article 1, Section 7 of the Constitution of the State of California guarantees by law that the individual has the right to make most decisions regarding medical care and receive much information with any proposed treatment or procedure as they may need in order to give informed consent or refuse a course of treatment. Well, this is just a flat-out lie. It actually doesn't say anything about medical care, other than referencing that, quote, "the maximizing the educational opportunities and protecting the health and safety of all public school pupils." And we move on. So, part of this resolution is Trinity County supports personal control of local school districts, businesses, and agencies to make decisions affecting their well-being. Well, what does this mean in actual practice? Are we really gonna let everyone do anything they want without reasonable restrictions? Doesn't living in a community require compromises and general agreements on things that might burden an individual but have an overall positive impact on our community? And we make, a community isn't about me, me, me. It's about in us. I mean, just look at our cannabis programs, neighborhood carve-outs, dob leash laws, noise ordinances, and the act of dividing our county into districts. We make agreements, compromises, to promote the greater good of our county, hopefully. Second, Trinity County supports right of all persons to vaccination exemptions for religious, medical, or personal reasons. Religious reasons include organized religions and sincerely held religious, ethical, and moral beliefs. So, religious liberty, government neutrality in religious practice is essential, but let's not abuse it. Religious liberty does not include the liberty to expose a community to communicable diseases. And vaccine objections based solely on social, economic, or political beliefs do not fall under those protections. And as a reminder, when we try to assert one of these liberties, may we remind ourselves that our actions have irreparable consequences, harmful consequences possibly, to those around us. A third point, Trinity County believes--
The three minutes goes up.
Oh, no, that was so quick. Well, thank you very much.
Well, spoken. Thank you very much.
Happy New Year's.
Okay, we have one on Zoom. Alice Hazard.
Hi, door. Thank you so much. I would ask that while you're considering this resolution that you would consider supporting it. I guess I wanted to make one comment while we discuss this, that whether someone is vaccinated or unvaccinated because of their religious beliefs, personal beliefs, medical history, that we know from the CDC that people who are vaccinated are still as likely to transmit COVID as people who are unvaccinated. So when we discuss whether or not someone should have the right to deny this medical treatment and still participate in society, that they aren't jeopardizing other people's health around them any more than a vaccinated person might. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your comments.
I have no other raised hands and no new chats on Zoom. I see no one else in the room.
Is there any further discussion from the board?
Yeah, I would like to point out, the discussion that came from the room really kind of did highlight some of my worries that, that when we start talking this constitutional debate, I think these are inaccurate statements, that if we were challenging this legally, that these are not, this is not where previous lots have gone. And again, my, my view is that when we talk about personal control of local school districts, that, in my view, it means community control. So if a local school district, as a, as a community, decides that community doesn't want to have mandates, then I totally respect that that community or community comes together, decides that they do want mandates, then, then everybody maintains that. That's my view. That's what I want to relay to people, that this is about community control, not a state mandate coming out of Sacramento telling everybody in the state what their community should or should not.
And that really was something that we wanted to, so Margaret and I had that discussion about the work, personal versus local. So, Margaret, could you maybe answer and speak to that a little bit to help supervisors understand how we kind of landed it, why?
I'm happy to participate in that discussion, but, you know, it ultimately is your decision on how you want to phrase it. But that was, the maker of the ordinance's goal and concept was to talk about having that personal freedom and that local control. And so the way it was phrased was to attempt to embody that. But again, if there's a way that supervisors would like to modify it, I'm happy to type while you're talking.
We can't hear you, Jill.
Oh.
So there was formal legal review, right?
Just to be clear, this is not a legally binding document. So I did assist in drafting it to make sure that it met the requirements that Trinity County has in terms of what a resolution should look like, and did provide some guidance in terms of areas that I thought were contradicting state law. But it's a policy statement. And so again, it's really what the board wants as their policy and how they want to convey their position on this. And so, again, there's always room to modify it if the board wants to. But from a legal standpoint, it meets our requirements for a Trinity County resolution.
But you're not making a statement that the constitutional accuracy is correct?
Those are in the wherethes, which means there are arguments. Those are arguments that have been made. If you want me to talk about how the courts have come down, and we discussed this, courts have come down with a position that mandates are legally allowed. So, so no, it's not, I'm not making, we can't make a political argument, can't make a legal statement on the accuracy of that. However, the arguments that are presented are what have been made to request additional local control, which I think is the purpose, again, of the, of the resolution. But again, I don't want to speak for the supervisors who drafted it.
It is about, I mean, you speak your mic if you want to.
So I think the gist of what we are trying to do is to, we know we can't govern the schools as a board. The schools govern themselves. We are just looking for the personal freedom of the people in Trinity County to have the right to choose for themselves what they want to do. And I think we got that pretty close as we could here. This isn't a legal document. We're not challenging any of the Constitution. So it's just the board supporting the freedom of choice in our county for, for all members for vaccination or non-vaccination.
I'd like to note that 50% of Trinity County's population has chosen to be vaccinated. And so I do want to make sure that that's recognized, that this county is split down the middle for the most part in more than one way. And I think it's important for both sides to, to stand up for what they believe in. And I think, you know, that's, that's what makes a democracy so valuable. We, we do have these choices to express ourselves and what we're feeling. But if there's no, you know, if there's no legal side to it, it's essentially just a statement. And, you know, I guess I would sway more with some of Keith's wording on making sure that statement is reflecting actually what the main goal is. And, and I don't have the legal, you know, knowledge of the Constitution to really break it apart. But, you know, in any of those, those dilemmas, there's going to be two sides to how that wording is represented. And those, you know, it goes to court and goes to Supreme Courts, and it gets reargued. And so I think there's levels of interpretation. And just recognizing that the county is split, I think is important. And as far as the schools go, I do believe there, there should be a choice. I did like a lot of the points that our public speaker brought up, though. So I thank you for representing that. Is there any other discussion?
If I may, I mean, I hate to jump in, because again, it's entirely your decision, but it sounds as if the divide on the board is over the inclusion of the state constitution. As a proposed alternative, you could have them read, whereas the Trinity Board of Supervisors values an individual's right to spiritual, and to make it more of a personal statement versus a legal statement. That might resolve some of the issues. But again, it's your pleasure to have it received.
Supervisor Cox, Supervisor Gogan, do you have any desire for any of those options?
I don't have a desire to change any of it, but I prefer it the way it is written.
I think, I think we both can live with that. And also, me and Jill do realize that we're 50-50 here in Trinity County. And we are open to gathering with the other 50%. We're not closed off to one side of this issue or not.
I think it's important to, to remember in that, too, though, that we did open up for public to, for any of the public with the newspaper ad, you know, to come forward and speak into it at this time. And that those who gathered actually wanted the resolution written more strongly than this. We pulled back for those that participated, and felt like we came to the balance that met the middle ground for what was received.
Right of all persons to vaccination exemptions, religious, medical, or personal reasons. Religious reasons include organized religions and sincerely held religious, ethical, and moral beliefs. So religious liberty, government neutrality in religious practice is essential, but let's not abuse it. Religious liberty does not include the liberty to expose a community to communicable diseases. And vaccine objections based solely on social, economic, or political beliefs do not fall under those protections. And as a reminder, when we try to assert one of these liberties, may we remind ourselves that our actions have irreparable consequences, harmful consequences possibly, to those around us. A third point, Trinity County believes-
The three minutes goes up.
Oh, no, that was so quick. Well, thank you very much.
Well, spoken. Thank you very much.
Happy New Year's.
Okay, we have one on Zoom, Alice Hazard.
Hi, Dor. Thank you so much. I would ask that while you're considering this resolution, that you would consider supporting it. I guess I wanted to make one comment while we discuss this, that whether someone is vaccinated or unvaccinated because of their religious beliefs, personal beliefs, medical history, that we know from the CDC that people who are vaccinated are still as likely to transmit COVID as people who are unvaccinated. So when we discuss whether or not someone should have the right to deny this medical treatment and still participate in society, that they aren't jeopardizing other people's health around them any more than a vaccinated person might. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your comments.
I have no other raised hands and no new chats on Zoom. I see no one else in the room.
Is there any further discussion from the board?
Yeah, I would like to point out the discussion that came from the room really kind of did highlight some of my worries that when we start talking this constitutional debate, I think these are inaccurate statements that if we were challenging this legally, that these are not, this is not where previous lots have gone. And again, my view is that when we talk about personal control of local school district, is that, in my view, it means community control. So if a local school district, as a community, decides that community doesn't want to have mandates, then I totally respect that that community or the community comes together and decides that they do want mandates, then everybody maintains that. That's my view. That's what I want to relay to people, that this is about community control, not a state mandate coming out of Sacramento telling everybody in the state what their community should or should not.
And that really was something that we wanted to, so Margaret and I had that discussion about the work, personal versus local. So Margaret, could you maybe answer and speak to that a little bit to help some of the folks understand how we kind of landed it, why?
I'm happy to participate in that discussion, but you know, it ultimately is your decision on how you want to phrase it. But that was, the maker of the ordinance's goal and concept was to talk about having that personal freedom and that local control. And so the way it was phrased was to attempt to embody that. But again, if there's a way that supervisors would like to modify it, I'm happy to type while you're talking.
We can't hear you, Jill.
Oh.
So there was formal legal review, right?
Just to be clear, this is not a legally binding document. So I did assist in drafting it to make sure that it met the requirements that Trinity County has in terms of what a resolution should look like, and did provide some guidance in terms of areas that I thought were contradicting state law. But it's a policy statement. And so again, it's really what the board wants as their policy and how they want to convey their position on this. And so again, there's always room to modify if the board wants to. But from a legal standpoint, it meets our requirements for Trinity County resolution.
But you're not making a statement that the constitutional accuracy is correct?
Those are in the whereas, which means there are arguments. Those are arguments that have been made. If you want me to talk about how the courts have come down, and we discussed this, courts have come down with a position that mandates are legally allowed. So no, it's not, I'm not making, we can't make a political argument, can't make a legal statement on the accuracy of that. However, the arguments that are presented are what have been made to request additional local control, which I think is the purpose, again, of the resolution. But again, I don't want to speak for the supervisors who drafted it.
It is, I mean, you can speak your mind if you want to.
So I think the gist of what we are trying to do is to, we know we can't govern the schools as a board. The schools govern themselves. We are just looking for the personal freedom of the people in Trinity County to have the right to choose for themselves what they want to do. And I think we got that pretty close as we could here. This isn't a legal document. We're not challenging any of the Constitution. So it's just the board supporting the freedom of choice in our county for all members for vaccination or non-vaccination.
I mean, I'd like to note that 50% of Trinity County's population has chosen to be vaccinated. And so I do want to make sure that that's recognized, that this county is split down the middle for the most part in more than one way. And I think it's important for both sides to stand up for what they believe in. And I think, you know, that's what makes a democracy so valuable. We do have these choices to express ourselves and what we're feeling. But if there's no, you know, if there's no legal side to it, it's essentially just a statement. And, you know, I guess I would sway more with someone Keith's wording on making sure that statement is reflecting actually what the main goal is. And I don't have the legal, you know, knowledge of the Constitution to really break it apart. But, you know, in any of those dilemmas, there's going to be two sides to how that wording is represented. And those, you know, it goes to court and goes to Supreme Courts and it gets reargued. And so I think there's levels of interpretation. And just recognizing that the county is split, I think is important. And as far as the schools go, I do believe there should be a choice. I did like a lot of the points that our public speaker brought up, though. So I thank you for representing that.
Is there any other discussion?
If I may, I mean, I hate to jump in because again, it's entirely your decision. But it sounds as if the divide on the board is over the inclusion of the state constitution. As a proposed alternative, you could have them read, whereas the Trinity Board Supervisor values an individual's right to spiritual, and to make it more of a personal statement versus a legal statement. That might resolve some of the issues. But again, it's your pleasure to have it received.
Supervisor Cox, Supervisor Gogan, do you have any desire for any of those options?
I don't have a desire to change it yet, but I prefer it the way it is written.
I think we both can live with that. And also, me and Jill do realize that we're 50-50 here in Trinity County. And we are hoping to gathering with the other 50%. We're not closed off to one side of this issue or not.
I think it's important to remember in that too, though, that we did open up for public to, for any of the public with the newspaper ad, you know, to come forward and speak into it at this time. And that those who gathered actually wanted the resolution written more strongly than this. We pulled back for those that participated and felt like we came to the balance that met the middle ground for what was received.
Yeah. So the way this came about is I had a meeting in AFOR with some folks. And then we grabbed a group together through the paper that wanted to have a meeting with myself and Jill here. We had that meeting. Jill is correct. They wanted to have a much stronger letter than this put forward. We got it down to where we think it's right. It puts forward the beliefs that we have and the beliefs that they have. And I think it works pretty well. And again, at that meeting, everybody was welcome. We did not get any, we'll say, pro-vaccine or pro-people at that meeting, although we're still welcome to meet with them at any time.
No, really, the discussion was not about pro-vaccine or anti-vaccine. It wasn't about the vaccine. It was about your right as a citizen to choose what you put into your body and what you don't. And to, and I think that really, the whereas, the final win, that the long-term effects of that vaccine are yet unknown, and that the final resolution portion, that Trinity County stands united against legislation of any health-related activity for which those long-term consequences are unknown, is really the defining portion of what's being said here. And so I'm not, I'm not holding space just to, just to hold space. It's that I feel like I'm holding space in representation of what people spoke into this, that they really feel as though that is, it's a far overreach for government to tell you what you will put in your body and how you may be disenfranchised from your education, your childhood education, your own employment. And as a result of that choice, that's not, that's not government's job to tell you, yes, safety first is our job as representatives, government representatives of the people. But their freedom, all of our freedom is paramount and job will end early.
All right. Unless there's any other discussion.
Well, I would move to adopt the resolution as presented.
I will second.
Sorry, take your time. Motion by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Gogan. Are there any subsequent or anything additional at this point before I pull forward? Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gogan, have you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Grobs?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
No.
Thank you.
Our next item is 2.16.
Adopt a resolution authorizing an application for rural recreation and tourism grant program funds to develop a whitewater rafting project. No impact to the general fund, potential revenue to the grants department in the amount of $3 million. I'll give you guys some background on this because this has kind of been a little project that I've been babying for a number of years, something I ran on, as well as the Community Choice App. Those are things that I campaigned for. And so this is kind of the fruition of a few years of really looking at this potential in Big Flat. I've done some presentations to the Trinity County Recreation Committee, and also to the U.S. Forest Service, and to some other individuals and businesses that are affected. A lot of people aren't familiar with what a whitewater wave park is, and they think of like water slides and stuff. But really what it is, is a way of doing sometimes a major, sometimes minor adjustments in the river with rocks and other materials, sometimes a slapboard. And it creates a wave that is always there in variations of flow. And these waves can be kayaked, stand-up paddle boarded, boogie boarded, surf boarded. People can even, it's called wave surf, when they're just swimming and the wave holds itself. So they are like an engineered thing that uses natural resources to install these. They're all earth-friendly. I don't want to go into too many details because I'm going to bring a presentation and have slides to share with you guys after the New Year. But we were trying to apply for a round of funding in January, and we're going to push back to the next round of funding because the environmental work needs to be complete on it. And so after the New Year, I will come forward and do a presentation and share with you guys the, some of the hurdles we're faced with, and kind of look at the pros and cons. So I'm happy to answer any questions on it now, but the timing of it, we're pushing back the application. The resolution could be discussed and approved now if you want it, but I can also bring it back to the board when the timing is a little bit more practical for the grant application. Any questions? I do have a question. It sounds like you're pulling this. Is that kind of what you're, because you guys are saying you don't want- I'm pulling the item because we're not ready to apply for the mid-January application for it. So there's another round of funding we'll be applying for. So the details, I mean, the item's not ever going to change. It's not stating the date of application. So this item will come back to the board one way or another. If the board wanted to entertain approving the resolution now, they could. Otherwise, I would probably suggest after you see a presentation on this project and some of the involvement and details going into it, then you probably have a better idea of if you were interested in supporting the project or not. But I'm happy to discuss it now. And if you're as interested in approving this resolution, there's no harm done. If Suzy's online and she wants to speak to that idea, she can. But otherwise, it's just, it's a big project. It requires a lot of environmental stuff, obviously, being in the river. And so a lot of progress has been made, but I wanted to make a more formal presentation with my slides and kind of educate the public on what it is because there are a lot of misunderstandings what the whitewater rafting project breaks down to.
So Jeremy, be similar to what we see in the Olympics for kayaking?
That's usually more slalom. So that's typically, that's a slalom race where there's lots of boulders and they're weaving through it. So that is not what this is. I'll send you some links so you can kind of see. And I'll do my presentation after the New Year. But no, it's usually, it's just a passageway through the normal river. Sometimes when it's really wide, they pinch it in. The wave requires about two feet of fall in the riverbed itself. But they are coupled with restoration, increasing fish habitat, youth. Specifically, the spot in Big Flat has mining tailings, and it's outside of the Restoration Program's jurisdictional area. So this would be an independent project of its own with tourism, recreation, youth, tribal involvement, and restoration, fish habitat, all kind of improving also this already river access spot in Big Flat. And so when I did my presentation to Forest Service, they did not say no. And so they're reviewing the easement requirements. It requires a 30-year easement. So there are a lot of parts to this. It's not a small project by any means, but that's kind of why I like it. We're the only ones in the whole state attempting this type of project. And so the likelihood of being awarded the grant, we would do really well on the points received for all the aspects of this grant that it encompasses.
Is this amount of money sufficient, or will you end up needing more as well?
You know, this project can be, there's a kind of a base model for the project, all on U.S. Forest Service lands. And then with the private landowners that are adjacent to it, there is the opportunity for them to sign on and essentially expand ADA pathway. This kind of the goal is what's going to go along the riverside. So they can be river viewing and viewing, spectating of these wave features where the activities can occur. So I've talked to the first landowner who is interested, and so we can kind of scoot the project up with a riverside trail for all of the private landowners that show interest in this. But otherwise, the project can be secured to the U.S. Forest Service site. I've got an engineer ready to do a feasibility and scoping study on it. Those cost approximately $25,000 to $40,000. So I'm trying to find a grant that would cover that. And then with that, once that feasibility study is completed, then we, that is what we would take for this $3 million grant. So I'm trying to locate a grant out there that would cover this $25,000 to $40,000 to do a feasibility and scoping study on the project. And then they also come up with the cost for it. I, you know, if the county is able and interested in coming up with that money independently, I think it's worth considering. But I would probably bring that back after the New Year with my thorough presentation. Unless you guys want to keep discussing it now, and I don't know how that, do we have to decide if we want to discuss it now, or can we just kind of meander through?
So if you want to discuss it now, you're going to hear the item, you're going to open it up to public comment?
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
So you guys, are you interested in discussing this further and potentially giving me direction or taking action on this and opening up to public comment? Or do you prefer to wait till after I do a more thorough presentation with slides?
I'm excited for your slides.
Okay. And I will be back after the meeting. Time is not of the essence. We, we'll be at the next round of funding, so there's not a time rush.
Yeah, and that's not like indicating lack of interest in your project at all. I just think it's awesome to be able to present it in your thorough manner and hear all of it.
No, I'd be excited to do so. And the engineer that's interested in this, they're an international firm. And so I'll line them up so they can answer technical questions. I've also ran this by the Restoration Program. And so far, at least Mike Dixon has been supportive of this concept. And they can endorse it as a restoration concept theoretically, too. So-
Is it outside your 40 mile?
Yeah. So the project will be independent of the program itself, but they would be able to give an endorsement or I think Dixon offered to essentially donate some vegetation plant design if we're going to do native vegetation plant design.
So Mike Dixon will be in?
Let's hold up and have this discussion till we bring it back as an agenda item. Thank you.
Okay. So I don't need to open up for public comment?
No, we're going to continue it to another date.
Okay. This item will be continued till after the New Year. So, in, out of there?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just having fun, listening.
Okay.
You're doing great work, Jeremy. Go get them.
I appreciate it. Actually, I'm excited to share it with you.
Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I just was being aware of an item that we need to bring as an emergency item. So at your pleasure, I can announce it.
Emergency item?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we just completed the phase one of our, whatever, consent conference, so now's the perfect time.
Thank you, Chair. There's a request out of county council and HR to bring in an emergency item to request the appointment of our two negotiators, Shelley Nelson and Sophie Meyer, on the IHSS negotiations. When they, when the folks came and presented today, it brought to our attention the fact that we do have to enter negotiations with them. And so we do need declaration from the board just appointing, authorizing them to enter that negotiation. And the reason is an emergency is state law that does require us to move forward on this in expedited manner or else potentially face consequences of fines. And we would like to be able to meet with them before the next board meeting so that we can meet those timelines.
You have my approval. I think that's all that's needed, right?
We need a motion to get it on the agenda, and then we need a motion to prove it when it's on the agenda. And I would need a forfeit vote to get it on the agenda.
I move to a two. Is that a motion over there?
Yes, it was.
I'll second it.
Motion by Supervisor Grobs, second by Chairman Brown. Chairman Brown, have you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Grobs?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
So with your pleasure, we can hear the item right now. The item would be a request of the board supervisors to appoint Shelley Nelson and Sophie Meyer as negotiators for IHSS negotiations.
So moved.
Can I interject for a moment? I guess we should, but public comment, thank you. Oh, she's right. I got it wrong. Sorry, Shelley. We actually wanted to Liz Hamilton. Is that correct? Is that what you're going to yell at me about? So we'd ask the subsequent motion to actually appoint Liz Hamilton as well, the Director of Social-
So moved.
If we have public comment and then you-
We're about to have public comment.
Yeah.
It should have been before the motion, I believe.
It would have been-
County Council, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Can we have public comment at this time? Or should I take the vote?
No, I'd appreciate a public comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Is there public comment on this item?
I have none in the room. I have a raised hand from Shelley Nelson. I'm not sure if this is current or-
Just want to make sure that it's appointing Sophie and Liz, not me.
Perfect. Thank you.
With the pile lotion. Thank you.
Okay. And that's all I have on Zoom.
Well?
So we have a motion from Chairman Brown and Supervisor, a motion by Supervisor Brown and second by-
You bet they are.
Ooh, second by Supervisor Cox. This is the subsequent motion that appointed Liz Hamilton and Sophia Myers, correct? Thank you. Supervisor Cox, have you voted?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Grobs?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes.
All right.
Thank you, board.
So that brings us to county reports and announcements. Item 3.1, report from department heads. Are there any department heads on Zoom wishing to report out?
Yes, we have Shannon White.
Shannon White, 13th reporter, registered voters. I just wanted to bring to your attention, as we all know, there's an upcoming primary election in June of 2022. And I have put on my webpage a page, the link to this election that currently has filing information because the signature and the new filing period is starting within a couple of weeks. So it's January 3rd for all local offices except for board supervisors. The board of supervisors petitioning the filing period starts on January 6th. And they both put one, they were at night. So that time period is a little smaller than normal. And that time period was lessened due to the redistricting process and the extension that the court gave to the redistricting committee, extending their timeline to get this thing done. So I just wanted to let the board know that that information is out there. There's information is out there. There's more information, you know, I'm putting information out as we get it. And so anybody interested in filing for any of the local positions, there's a page on my website.
Awesome. Any questions? All right. Hearing done. Thank you for your time. Any other department heads on Zoom? Hearing done. Do you have any in the room? All right. Report from county CAO.
Just a couple of quick housekeeping. As I'm not sure the board is aware of it, we had our meeting yesterday with our consultants from Lakota and Helix presenting kind of, and laying out kind of the way the appendices will be submitted and reviewed. We got a full house and several people on Zoom, so it was well participated. Met some great questions and responded to those questions and got some answers. And it'll be an ongoing thing. The consultants committed to doing this. I don't know if it was monthly or bimonthly, but they'll be in county several times to continue to work with our cultivators. And then just one more, we're getting questions about the TOT payments going out. They're submitted over to the Otter's office and should be receiving those reimbursement checks or those checks probably next week or right after the first of the year. Thank you.
Questions for CEO Cox?
How many appendices have we gotten so far?
I think we're around 75 or 80. And we've submitted at least 50 of them. And they've already started reviewing. They're reviewing the 50 and have started returning some of the responses, the first 25.
Are we getting a decent percentage of fully-
Right now, it's zero.
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 Not a good percentage.
No. Depends on which, if you're golf or you're bowling. If you're golf, it's great. If you're bowling. But no, right now, every one of them has some deficiency. And that's why we had the meeting yesterday to kind of go through those and help and work with that and expedite turning those around.
Is there a common deficiency you're seeing?
Yeah, most of it is in project description. Is that correct? Yeah, most of it's in the project description.
And lack of details?
Yeah.
Lack of, yes.
Extreme detail.
I can, I'll go into it a little more when I do.
Yeah, I didn't mean to take your thunder.
I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask you to speak to this, and it's not. That's-
cannabis related from SHN and move them over to, uh, let Helix or Laco, the only ones that will stay with SHN are probably CUPs that are probably seventy, seventy-five percent complete, and rather than pulling them and paying a new consultant to do it, so, but, uh, Lisa's going through those and reviewing. I think there's thirty altogether, and we'll probably pull all but about five, six that will stay with SHN, so that will speed up the process for other things, uh, that are land use related and building related to SHN.
So how is that process, though? Are we, have we sent some of those things over yet?
Which ones?
Just the land use general types of?
I would have to check with Lisa, but I'm, I'm, I'd assume that, yeah, that, uh, anything coming in is still going, is still going over there, and it should start, get, start freeing them up from, from, uh, the cannabis related items.
Any questions for Dr. Coons? All right, then, if we can get into report outs. Who would like, want to use, start our, our, on the left there, Supervisor Groves?
Okay, uh, well, right now, the only report out that I'll have is on, uh, TMC, and I, and I'll start this off, and Liam can finish it, but, so at the, we had the quarterly TMC meeting, which I had to be on the road, um, off and on, and I was in and out of that meeting, so I had previously asked, um, Liam to be the, uh, the lead as the alternate, uh, but the voting member on that. We did have, uh, which people may or may not have heard, there was a vote to change the winter flows, and, um, uh, that was defeated by, uh, six to, interestingly enough, in TMC, six to two defeat something, so two noes defeats, defeats, um, it's a weird system they have. So, uh, Liam chose to vote, knowing that, uh, we have, uh, between me and him internally, we have a disagreement on that vote, but, but is going to take place now, um, let me go back, I'm going, I'm hopping around in my mind. Uh, after his vote, the next day, I asked for a reconsideration vote, uh, in TMC, and me and Liam have sat down, and, uh, Liam's going to come up with, uh, a white paper that we're going to work together on, and then, uh, of his concerns of what's going on in, in this winter flow, and then we're going to sit down with, um, with TMC staff and see if we can hammer those out and, uh, get this moving one way or another. Um, and, uh, if not, uh, then we'll, we'll go from there. So internally, this is a controversial issue that may or may not at some point come back to the board, uh, but I just, I'm sure there's rumors around town, I want the place to be, uh, coiled, but, uh, Liam had a right to vote, because I was not able to vote in the meeting, so that was one, uh, thing. And, uh, so I'll let him finish off like he wants. The other part of TMC is refinements. Uh, I am very disappointed in where refinements are heading within TMC. Um, we started refinements with that this program has problems, is not working as well as it should. There were members within there that used the terms, you know, read, sign, blow up, start over, and then there was other people that's, you know, talked about, well, we just need to make tweaks. And in the end, on all the major decisions, we really are doing nothing. Um, it's going to be business as usual, except on some few minor things, which really disappoints me that we, we have this great opportunity that we're spending, uh, probably going to spend six, seven hundred thousand dollars with consultants and looking at programs all over the United States, and in the end, we are just going to be, do the same old thing. And, and, uh, so, but I will remain in there, keep throwing out, uh, what I feel are necessary changes to improve the program and keep fighting the fight for now. So with that, that's all I have, and then we'll come back and do cannabis later.
Should I continue on with TMC?
Yeah, it's up to the Chair.
So, okay. So with all the things Keith just said about TMC and their flaws, and there's a lot, a lot of them, um, and I understand fully Keith's just grown to admit with them, um, a lot of my, my new vote went towards the, right now Keith's working on a word document to try to figure out, you know, adaptive management. I'm working with the science side to try to figure out how to do the science part, get the science from the river, to restoration, and restoration, put it back on the ground as a, as a fully functioning, uh, project. Um, so my hesitation, and, and the white paper that Keith talked about, is, um, you know, we still have a long way to go in, in regrouping TMC, so they are a, a management oversight division of Trinity River Restoration Program. And I don't think until we actually get that done, will I be confident in changing the, the flows of the, the most historic change of flows on the Trinity River since the record decision was brought in in two thousand. So, um, I do think that there's a lot of good things in the flows, and there's, there's a lot of things that need to be changed and tweaked, and, um, I have a lot of hesitation with it. It was controversial, um, because I mean, Monica's temporary and lead, we got that, uh, hammered out, I think. Uh, I know we do, Don Bader, the head of, um, Bureau of Reclamation, who is the head of TMC, uh, weighed in the other day that the vote is, been cast in a solid six to, um, the two votes, myself and the tribal tribe descending on the vote, the other six, uh, were yay. So it's one of the few things where you can get six yes votes and two no votes, and the two no votes win, which is a huge problem with TMC in general. The supermajority vote is just not a good way to go. So, um, I think between that and what Keith spelled out, I, I, I think we've come to a, uh, conclusion that we're going to go forward and try to work on the flows, get them a little better, probably get them implemented sometime next year, so kind of whenever we get this year. Now, if we do continue to get a wet winter, which would be really good for helping to implement these flows, um, I would be forward, as I am, for all of restoration provisions on this river.
Awesome. Um, that concludes your report.
Uh, I have some other things, but, so I'll just finish up my. So Saturday.
Saturday?
Yep. Myself and Dan Fraser were at the, among New Year's celebration. We were both the, uh, guests to honor, and it was, uh, it was, it was a fun time. Dr. Coons was there, his wife, nobody else in the county? I think that was about it.
Well, I got pictures of you guys playing some flute or something.
Oh, do you? Oh, hey, hey, hey. Sacred. Um, yeah, so they gave us some, some tokens of their gratitude. One of them was a handmade, um, flute of some sort, and, um, it was, it was pretty interesting. Um, I'll put this way, their New Year's celebration is much different than the ones I've been at prior to that. Um, but had a bunch of fun. Um, I think Dan had the most fun, but, uh, it was a good time. I'm sure we'll be back next year. Dan, any comment on that?
Anything?
No? Too much fun. Um, what else did we do? That's about it. We talked about the resolution, TMC. Um, I was going to say something about the K housing, but I'm going to leave that to Dan.
That'll be later on, anyway.
Okay. That's it for me.
All right. Go ahead to the best figure. Um, I think the only thing I'll really have to report out is when we get down to the limited density rule, going out. Oh, just go, oh, you can just do it now. Okay, well, if you want me to do it now, I guess I can, but, um, Liam and I and County Council have got a draft ordinance prepared that I'm going to be taking to Lisa Loosier to, um, look at at her pleasure, um, and then hopefully early next year, we'll have more report out and bring it back to the board as a whole for further direction, unless, um, county staff has major changes or major issues that need to be addressed by that hour before that. All right. So that's all your report out? It's totality? Yep.
So in addition to the time that was spent creating the resolution, which was, um, extensive, and, um, I would say it's enjoyable. It, it's an interesting thing to bring people from both sides of something that is so polarized and so deeply, such deeply held beliefs inside of people, and, um, I appreciated that experience. Um, I also observed the approximate ten hours of review and discussion and project selection of the Resource Advisory Committee on their Title II funds, which I found to be, um, really educational, and, um, that's a lot of hard work. I have a very large group of people, and, um, the, um, quorum alone that's required is, and can be difficult to meet, and I appreciate those peoples and hours of, um, volunteer labor on that. And CSAT, I just want to say thank you to the county because it's your tax dollars that send us to those, um, types of meetings, and I, I just engaged fully with it. I learned a great deal, and, um, I don't take lightly the fact that that's expensive week, and, um, and I am really appreciative of what I learned, and just the exposure to realize we are, though we are rural and we have our uniqueness, and that's the value of RCRC, um, I was surprised to find out how many things we actually have in common with even the counties that are not rural, and that was enlightening, and, um, I think important in a lot of ways to, to realize we're, we can feel alone and we're really quite not. So, um, that is the end of our report.
Well, we should mention about CSAT that Emma did rock the, the Clerks' World down there. She was a superstar. I know she goes unnoticed there, but she was the top of the little town. And, and if you want to make CSAT really expensive, and it was, um, bring your wife.
All right.
It gets really expensive.
Or your husband.
Or your husband, or your husband, or significant other.
Clarify that doesn't make it more expensive for the count.
No, not for the county. No, for the person, individual. So your wife, husband, or significant other.
Um, Joe, I just want to ask, you, you said Title Two, but you think you meant Title Three? Is that right?
I don't think that the rap is. I think the rap is Title.
The rap is Title Two, and the S.
Title Three is what we're going to be talking about.
Oh, okay, cool, thank you. All right. Um, so my reporting out goes back a little ways because of out of town travel. Um, I went to DC, not on the county's dollar. Um, I took my whole family. We followed the Christmas tree, and we had some great celebrations out there. There was a great group of California representatives and California sponsors, um, a lot of Forest Service, local Forest Service, uh, staff was there, including Ted McArthur and Kristen Mark, Chief Randy Moore, Visit California, Caroline Peteta was there. So I had nice opportunities just to kind of talk with all of them, um, a little bit more of a casual setting. Um, it was, I was glad I was there because Nancy Pelosi thought that the tree came from Crescent City, so I was able to correct Nancy Pelosi's staff and make sure that Trinity County was properly represented to the, its best of its ability. Um, also from Trinity County was the last example of the Wailaki-Wintune family group, um, John and Monica Elgin. It was great to get to know them. They're down in Fraser's district there. Um, so it was nice they represented the, the tribal lands of which the tree came from. Um, I was able to go and speak with RCRC's hired lobbyist, ACG, in Washington, DC. A big thing with them is the infrastructure bill, and how this infrastructure bill is going to be unique in that it's earmarking dollars in advance for, uh, specific projects for specific counties. So we have a great opportunity of being kind of first in line, um, with submitting requests for large scale projects that, um, are, are applicable for Trinity County. Roads, bridges, culverts, new county buildings, wastewater systems, water systems, all those things, um, are all, uh, potential under that. So that was really educational. Uh, BG&E was out there. They've dedicated to burying ten thousand miles of wire in California, so I thought that was pretty interesting to hear about. Um, after DC, I went to the RCRC meeting in Merced. It was an annual meeting that had been pushed back from last year due to COVID. Uh, we had our first Cal Connect meeting about the California Rural Broadband. Essentially, it's just a conglomerate of monies that they're consolidating, and those monies can be accessed for the different uses of the phases of broadband. Um, and I'll be asking RCRC to come to a board meeting next, next year, do a presentation kind of on the status of that and what additional steps are required of Trinity County, if any, to ensure that we're not missing out on our broadband opportunity. Um, Santa Barbara, we became a new member to RCRC, so there's discussion of what, what makes a county rural. Santa Barbara's population is approximately six hundred thousand, and, um, and RCRC, or sorry, maybe it's seven hundred thousand, and RCRC's definition of rural membership was at six hundred thousand, so all the members had to vote on whether or not to allow Santa Barbara. There were some concerns. I believe Lassen County was the only county that voted no. Um, the rest of us all supported Santa Barbara. I think one of the big things is, even though Santa Barbara has a big urban, you know, uh, aspect to it, they have a large area, probably a larger area of land that is all rural and ag and water and forest, and so there's a lot of overlapping issues. Uh, the advantage to a, a county like Santa Barbara joining is that they bring also a lot of their, their federal and state leverage to some of the, the issues that affect all of the RCRC members and not just Santa Barbara. So there's kind of a give and take of what bigger counties that have urban aspects, or rural aspects and urban aspects can still bring to the table for RCRC. So that was a good discussion to have. Um, we had the Golden State Natural Resource Meeting, and, um, for those who don't know what that is, that's a, it's like a, a, it's an extension of RCRC, and it's their natural resource division. They have a twenty-year master stewardship agreement with US Forest Service for the, um, I think it's Region, don't quote me, it's Region one or two, I think, for most of the Sierra Nevada, but then it also comes into some of the central, uh, mountain systems, and it's mostly for biomass removal, so small woody debris, forest thinning projects, they're going to take all of that material, turn it into a pellet, of which two pellet plants are being built. Um, one is in Lassen County, and I believe the other one is closer to Merced County, maybe. They'll make these little pellets. Those pellets will go on a train to the port, and then they'll go onto a boat, and then they'll go over to China and Japan, where they're used to preheat coal plants, because preheating coal plants with a wood pellet from California is more environmentally friendly than using coal to warm up their coal plants. So it's a whole cap and trade program. There's a lot of carbon credits, Paris Agreement, um, details in there, but it's moving along, and it is a, a massive project. I've been trying to find ways of keeping Trinity County involved in it outside of just the discussion, and, um, it's, it's challenging just based on the ports and where they're trying to use railways, railways to access the ports. Um, Humble Bay Port has been discussed, has an option. I've talked with Supervisor Exbone over there about that, and we're not giving up on it, being an opportunity. Um, having the two ninety-nine and a port there definitely keeps us, uh, in the potential loop for, I think, maybe a future third site development, um, somewhere within Trinity County, because we do have lots of biomass to offer. So that with our cheapest power and the state gives us good, um, opportunity, so making sure they're aware of that, don't want to get forgotten. Um, and I think that concludes, I had a meeting with Forest Service, our monthly meeting with Tara Jones, so it is really nice having these scheduled monthly meetings now with our, um, our local District Rangers. I appreciate it very much. Um, and I think, uh, oh, additionally, Humble Bay did finally get the international broadband, um, internet cable that came in, two of them. I think one from Singapore and one from Taiwan or China or something, so these cables are. So these cables run literally across the ocean floor from over there all the way to the Humboldt Bay. They'll go into a building in Arcata and that building will be pumping out the mega bandwidth and all of that. And that ties into the digital 299 plan, which I think also includes, sorry, PG&E bearing a lot of their lines. A lot of that line bearing is going to be occurring in the western part of Trinity County and also Humboldt County. So I'm sure there'll be more on that to come. That's all I have. This is my last meeting as chairman. It's been an honor to serve this position and thank you all for your support. I'm not resigning.
I thought there was a mic drop in there or something.
It was a filibuster, though. I'm tempted. So did you want to do your ad hoc?
Yeah, we'll, we'll start out and we'll see if he has anything to add. So we, we continue to meet on our Thursday ad hocs. But what's really, again, the role of the ad hoc is, as Dan and I have seen it, is to try to help be a bridge between the community and government agencies and also have some oversight on getting things moving and not getting down in the details of figuring out how people get their licenses. So I think yesterday's meeting was, was part of that fruition, fruition of what we've been working on. Staff and Richard have been doing good work in getting things moving with consultants. David is like some sort of superhero here. I don't know what we do for him when this is all over, unless he collapses. He is on a much deserved vacation now. So if he comes back, we, we hope that that's what happens. But so yesterday's meeting, we had both consultants, as we've said before, Helix is taking the lead in the public information aspect of this. They laid out what, what they want to see in the appendixes and the EIR, Sequo work, excuse me. This is, this is not a quick process and people need to kind of grasp onto that. So what, what the process is going to be is they're going to turn in their Sequo work, they, their appendixes with all their information. One of the big issues that there wasn't the details that were put in. So if you, if you have to have a fire plant, you actually have to turn the fire plant in at that time. And there was confusion on that. It's not just, okay, later sometime I'm going to do a fire plant. It all has to be completed. And so I think virtually every one of the things that were returned are going to be returned, they should be getting letters today or in the next few days, the deficiencies. So that was a big issue in actually writing out the details of the project and having verbal discussion on what the project did, what it has been, where you're going on that is all a part of this project that, that has to be put down. So I, I do want to go into a little bit of, this is just the environmental side of this project. So once those come out and, and they've done this and they've complied with the Sequo, they still have to comply with our ordinance. So it, it comes out of that and then it comes back to us and, and to make sure that they have complied with the aspects of the ordinance such as setbacks and, and I'm forgetting the order, the exemption that you get for your setback.
Right.
It's those variances. Thank you, Dan. And those, those things still all need to be done before the final license is, is coming out. And so this, it's, there's no magic pill here to, to complete this. So, but I, it was a really good meeting. I think the, everybody was, was positive and asking good questions and, and even though they are a little disappointed in some of the things that they have to do, at least they know exactly what they have to do to move forward. And with that also, we have, we have a meeting with the, the other consultant on, on ordinance writing and that will be on the sixth. And so with that, we will have a meeting on hopefully setting up priorities on, on issues, things that may be adjusted into the cannabis ordinance to help streamline the process. I, a lot of growers are very worried that we get too in detail at this time before they get their licenses, but the, the concept is to just make that process be quicker and easier. Also, we still have the opt outs that are coming up that have to be dealt with and retail license and stacking license and the personal grow, all of that has to be done relatively quickly in this process. So with that, is there any questions? I know it's kind of complex.
I've got a few. Are you getting like a broad spectrum of legal growers, concerned citizens, anti-cannabis? Or is it just, it seems to be the same people showing up all the time?
So this, last Monday's meeting was a little broad spectrum. We did not, we, and I'll take the blame on this, I did not really put this out to the non-grow community. So I got some emails today saying, how come we weren't invited? And it was a public meeting. It wasn't that we didn't invite them, we just.
Did you personally invite them?
Yeah, did not personally invite them. And so they, they missed that. So we'll get that available and open for anybody that wants to attend. So in the ad hoc, basically right now we have, we're kind of meeting separately because the, the grow community is not comfortable meeting with anybody that's a member of TAA. So we have their meeting and then we have kind of more open public meeting. And so within that, we have the opt out people and, and then concerned citizens. And then in the grow community, we have mainly it's the, it's the consultants and some, some growers that mainly is the consultants. And so we have at least three different consulting companies that are coming to every meeting. And I'm sure that, you know, I'm sure there's some frustration from them, like yesterday, why this meeting wasn't held, you know, 10 months ago. But it, the process is the process and there's no magic bullet, as I.
So there's been a clear delineation between two separate entities in ad hoc where you're separating, we'll say pro and con by what mark?
I don't think we're really separating. They separated themselves and they requested a different meeting then.
Yeah, I guess they feel that would be the most productive way to do things.
Yeah. So the original concept that I'd come up with is that we, we'd have an open public meeting for anybody who wanted to come. And we described this and then that we would have private meetings with anybody that wanted to have private meetings. And it quickly, the, the grow community has no confidence in, in being able to be open with the TAA in the room. And they feel that the TAA would just be there to get information to sue them and shut them down. So they want to have their own, and not, we have, is, I think I described this in one of the meetings, that we really haven't had TAA participation. We've had people within TAA that are involved with the opt outs, per se. But we haven't had the head of TA since the very first meeting who, you know, had said that he wondered why we were even having these meetings. And so they haven't made a formal, you know, the lawyer, Rachel, she hasn't been there or anything like that. So it's, it's more of the concerned citizen side and then the grow side.
Who is the acting head of TA now, is what they?
I believe it's, I believe the president is Nancy Anderson. And she does come and she has understood under counsel that if we were discussing the, she can come to the opt outs, but on the general other things that they, Susan counselor, the transition plan, she's not allowed to be at the transition plan meetings because we're under litigation. But that is kind of since past, so she's only been coming to the opt out.
Is there, is it coming upon you guys to, if asked, what happened at the, the con meeting by the pro people or vice versa?
I've made it clear that I'm not hiding anything if people ask me questions. I will say, you know, what, what's going on, what their concerns. But again, the, the, the con group, which I think it's unfair to call it that.
I'm just trying to delineate.
They have more general, large picture questions and the cannabis group has very, like more technical questions like, so how do we fill out this form? And, and how do you want this done? And what happens? Who do I see to get a fire plan put together? It's, it's all much more technical. And so me and Dan's role in that is.
To try to figure out who the contact is.
Right. It's to relay this along. We're not the ones, decision makers here. But for example, when we get notified today that, you know, how come, how do we get invited in that meeting? So, well, we take care of that, that, so those people get invited to that meeting. And I think there are, there's going to be things brought to the board as a whole through this process, like the, the citizen group is very concerned about when the process is done, the appeals process and how do they appeal? Because the citizen re, under Sequo really doesn't get to see anything until it's, you know, brought forward. And then you have 10 days to, to look at that and file an appeal. So I think we don't have a, a solution or an idea yet of how that process is. Do, do, you know, people think it's unfair that we charge $500 for them to have their say on this public document? So there's, there's issues like that that we will come forward to the board as a whole to make what we feel is, you know, our proposal and then see what you guys think. Besides, we will also, any, any ordinance changes that have coming, of course, that will be dealt with our new consultant and, and the planning commission that will come to us.
Awesome. So that report out. I will say, I was asked by licensed growers why I did not elect myself to be part of that ad hoc committee for cannabis. And I stated that I had put my trust of the process into the two supervisors I had felt that had the most footing on a well-rounded approach to cannabis industry in the county. The optics in this county of having a cannabis grower part of an advisory role committee don't go over well. And so hopefully the community recognizes my actions as beneficial.
And I, I appreciate that too, Jeremy. And I think, I think it's really noteworthy that this is, this is being run differently than the last ad hoc, where the last ad hoc was in the details, fighting through this. Where here, we are more of a hands off, trying to be big picture, trying to make sure that people have something, someplace to go and then trying to work with staff to say, okay, we have this problem here. Who do we hire? What do we do to get this done? And not to get buried into, okay, we feel that it needs to be 18 feet from a fence and, you know, your fence has to be six foot two or any of that. Leave that to the professionals.
Awesome. All right. So that concludes the reports and announcements. We'll go into county matters unless anybody needs a break. These items include non-routine or controversial matters that are listed alphabetically by department, a member of the board staff, and requests that may be heard out of order. Is there any reordering requesting going on today? Hearing none, we go into Child Support Services item 4.1, approval memorandum of understanding of what kind to continue to provide or analyze. Child Support Services for Trinity County under the North Coast Regional Department of Child Support Services. And Diane Dura is the contact here. Is, oh.
I'm Bennett Hoffman. I'm the Director of Child Support.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much for being here.
You bet. No problem. Good afternoon. As I said, I'm Bennett Hoffman. I'm the Director of North Coast Department of Child Support Services. So in December of 2015, Humboldt and Trinity Counties decided to enter into an agreement to consolidate the child support services for the two counties into the one department. That created the depart, the North Coast Department of Child Support Services. That agreement expired in December of 2020 with a 12-month automatic renewal period. So we need to renew it or do something differently by January 2022. The MOU before the board today, we haven't really made any substantive changes. It's the same MOU that the two counties agreed to in 2015. We made some changes to some of the languages, updating the language, but it's the same structure that we had that the counties agreed to five years before.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there any public comment on this item?
I see none from the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
All right. Any further discussion from the board?
I move to adopt 4.1 as presented.
Oh, second.
Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank Bennett for coming all the way over for the three minutes. They are very active in our, when we have our department meetings, he attends and they're very active and, and we're well with the county, so we appreciate that.
Thank you for your patience. All right. Next, next section here, county administrator office, item 4.2, leave the reading of and enact an ordinance pending Trinity County, but section 1.08 pertaining to supervisory district boundaries based on the 2021 redistricting process, no fiscal impact. Who's in charge?
I'll take it, but we're on our final leg here. We've had lots of discussion. We've had many workshops. We've, I think, done a due diligence, so the board is pleased with what they have come up with. We're at that point where we're ready to enact it.
All right. And any questions from the board?
I, I will just state, Jeremy, that, that by no actions of mine, but you did, used to have a little bit of the water that went into the lake that they gave me Emerald Sapphire in Mira Lake, or now into District One, so.
We know where the water still flows.
Yep, Sanjo Valley.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item?
I see none in the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Okay. Bring it back to the board then.
Move to adopt 4.2 as presented.
Oh, second.
Motion by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye. So, you know, that was a big deal there. The public was not aware yet. That just redefined a lot of the maps. Personally, for District Four, that means the people of Haiampang, I'm now your representative. I'm eager to come out and meet the community.
I'm eager to come out and meet the community, and feel free to reach out. And also, a coroner of Post Mountain has come into District Four, as well as District Three and Five also got Post Mountain. It's very interesting. It's pretty exciting, I think. Something new.
It'll take effect in 30 days.
Oh, 30 days?
Yes.
So save your phone calls for 30 days.
Actually, it takes effect immediately.
You told me 30.
No. An ordinance typically takes place 30 days after it's adopted. There's a special decision that came out of Ledge Council regarding redistricting that says it takes effect after the first reading.
I will take your phone calls today.
Sorry, before, Merry Christmas. It works out.
All right. Well, that's exciting. Item 4.3, select proposals for the 45-day public comment period pursuant to Title III, Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of 2000, approximately 192,000. In Title III, funding.
I will take this one too. Thank you, Chair. This is our round of funding for secure rural schools, for programs, the Firewise Community Program, and can reimburse participation in county search and rescue, law enforcement, such that, also for training costs. We have several proposals for the board. There's two different choices you could make today. One, you can go through and pick the ones that you think should go into the 45-day public comment section. Or you can, as a whole, say we're going to allow all of them to go through and see what we have as far as support in these proposals. So I kind of turn over to the board. What's your pleasure? I guess Susie wants to correct me.
Sorry. No. There was, I just wanted to let the board and the public know that there was an additional proposal that was received by Coffee Creek Fire. I emailed it out to you guys yesterday. You're getting a hard copy of it today. It will be uploaded to the packet, but you are, can consider that one with the additional ones that were attached as backup for this one.
And as you can do by the math, we're oversubscribed, $192,000 in funding available and about 355 and some change in requests, which is, which is normal in almost all of our PUs and our PPs and things like this. But anyhow, so I will turn over to the board and answer any questions you have.
So we need to pick and choose.
Or you can just choose to send all of them out, allow public comment on all of them.
Oh. Just for public comment, not difference?
Yes, for public comment.
Okay.
My vote would be to send them all out, and then we have a decision-making process to look at the public.
Do any supervisors disagree?
I would just ask that when it comes back for decision, that we, it's new information to me, how this funding works and the importance that we be the gatekeepers of making sure that every project we, that we appropriate funding to can draw a straight line to that activity or those items being purchased, being used exactly on federal lands. Because there have been examples in the past where people appropriated funds to something and then upon, what do you call it when it gets? Thank you. It's found to not have done that, and they end up having to pay the money back. And my understanding from the RAC chairman, Pat Frost, is that this money could easily go away. It has been since 2006 or 2007, when this went through as standalone legislation, and since then, it has been incorporated into other legislation. And so I just don't want to see us lose the potential to have this because we're not careful with where we put it. So I think that, since my understanding is new, maybe Liam's is. I don't know if you're fully versed on how this works and what we're really responsible for, but I think having that kind of a presentation would be helpful.
And we do have Pat Frost on Zoom if the board would like about a five-minute overview of how this funding is to be spent. He's our resident expert on it, so he's stayed online just in case we had any questions. So it's a board's pleasure, we could do that.
Does the board have questions? You guys love presentation?
I hope you know where you'd be refined.
All right. Pat, you there?
There you are.
Okay. So today, I'm before you as the chairman of the Title II Resource Advisory Committee, and I kind of appreciated the fact that Chairman Brown had a question about Title II versus Title III. I think Emma has a graphic that she can put up that kind of shows how this all works. So need to kind of zoom it. There we go. So just to, you know, to give you guys a really big overview. So secure rural schools funding, which actually began with legislation in 2000 and went into effect in 2001, continued a process of providing funds to forest-dependent counties, counties that have a lot of federal forest lands on them and don't pay taxes on those lands. And so this is kind of an in lieu of taxes program. The money that comes to each county, 85% of the money goes to what is called kind of the roads and schools. That's the bulk of the allocation. So Trinity County Roads Department gets half of that 85%, and the schools get the other half of that 85%. And then the schools have lots of different ways they have to spend their money. 15% of that total pot of money goes to the Title II Resource Advisory Committee and to the county under Title III. And your solicitation that Susie sent out identifies four areas, and Emma, I don't need the slide anymore. It identifies four ways that the funding in Title III can be spent. And it's a tiny pot of money compared to the total, the total amount that the county gets, but it has an outsized impact. It has a greater-than-the-dollar-value impact because it truly is local control. It's federal money that you, the Board of Supervisors, have the authority on allocating that funding, and it is going to go to local entities that meet the criteria for that funding. It has another outsized impact, which is, as Supervisor Cox was kind of indicating, it seems to be the pot of money that catches the most interest by especially the detractors of secure rural schools. Secure rural schools barely gets reauthorized, went through a two-year gap between 2016 and 2018, where it wasn't refunded. It gets slid into other bills because it doesn't stand up on its own weight to get reauthorized. Examples, it was put in the Strategic Helium Bill. I didn't even know we had Strategic Helium, but it was funded through the Strategic Helium Bill. Current, the newest round is actually in the Infrastructure Bill, which makes sense. Another time, it was attached to the Hurricane Katrina Relief Act. So it gets a lot of scrutiny, and most of the scrutiny is in Title III because of that local control, that the federal government doesn't have any say in how that funding gets spent. Probably the most egregious example from the early years was up in either Oregon or Washington, where a county bought a helicopter ostensibly to be used for search and rescue. They got audited, and the auditors asked for the flight logs for the helicopter, and they found out that 90-some percent of the use of the helicopter was simply to shuttle members of the Board of Supervisors and senior county staff to meetings, and they had to repay the cost of that helicopter. There are some really easy, you know, easy categories of projects. I mean, the category of supporting firewise activities is somebody submitting a proposal to you to do outreach or community work under Firewise Communities Program, which I believe you got a little taste of what that is earlier today when Amelia Flights talked off to Firesafe Council. The other is developing community wildfire protection plans. That's another, that's easy. Somebody said, I want to develop a community wildfire protection plan that fits. The tricky ones are the reimbursement to participating county for search and rescue and other emergencies services, including firefighting. And that one's tricky because there's an additional requirement that the funding request needs to be proportional to the use on federal land. And so the example that I would just kind of, quick example I would give would be, let's talk about personal protective equipment, turnouts that firefighters need to wear, volunteer firefighters need to have to respond to fires. There's two categories of turnouts. One is wildland gear, and one is for structural fires. So it seems that it'd be pretty easy to say, if it's wildfire gear, you know, it passes the initial test of being something that could be used on federal land. Structural gear, that's a pretty, it's pretty clear to me that that doesn't really qualify for responding to emergencies on federal land. Then take that subset of wildland gear. Easiest example of what would qualify is a department responds to a fire on federal land, wildland gear gets damaged and needs to be replaced. That's, it easily fits into Title III. A little less clear is a department's gear is just timed out, and they need new wildland gear, and they submit a proposal to Title III. So how much of their, their need, you know, for that wildland gear is to respond to federal emergencies? That's kind of the test that you guys need to, to put that kind of proposal through. If it's 80% of their responses to, for wildfire are on federal land or protecting federal land from fires on private land, you could say, we could, we could fund 80% of that cost. Another similar kind of example would be something like an ambulance. Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department has an ambulance, four-wheel-drive ambulance. They respond to all kinds of calls, mostly medical calls on private land or vehicle accidents. But sometimes they respond on, on federal land. Firefighter gets injured, hiker, camper gets injured, needs to be extricated, brought back out. You would have to look at, again, the kind of the call ratio to decide how much of, let's say, that fire department needed new tires for its ambulance. How much of it, that, the use of those tires to move that ambulance is to respond on federal land? And I think as you guys go to that next step after the public comment period, that's going to be the test you're going to need to, need to make for each proposal and to figure out what is the most appropriate and best uses of that limited amount of money you have, 90-some thousand dollars a year for, for a two-year period. And that's kind of my, my short, kind of, five-minute overview of Title III.
Pat, I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
Say there is a fire on federal land, and it comes into private homes or home, and the turnout of the gear gets destroyed fighting that private home. How do we kind of tease that money out of there?
That's a tough one. That's, that's why you guys get the big bucks.
No, we don't.
No. I would say you could probably make a case, but, so that was a fire, you know, so how much of that, how much of that structural gear's total use goes to that particular type of incident? That'd be the kind of thing you'd need to kind of weigh. And you could, you know, one thing you could just simply ask applicants to provide that kind of backup information during this public comment period. Your staff could just ask for those kinds of summary kind of records, the last year, the last couple of years of, of, of use, and see where that, if that helps you out.
Do we, do we have a percentage of ambulance calls that go out to federal lands?
Each department?
And they do? Do they have it all?
Yeah. I mean, I can only speak for Trinity Center, but I know that the Trinity Center staff or volunteers keep records of every incident that they, they go out on and what kind of incident it is. Anything, any other questions?
Yeah, Pat, so in additional information to Liam's question, are you saying that wildland urban interface would be looked favorably upon by an auditor, but that once you've got to that interface for that residential home, then you would just be looking at percentage of total response?
Yes, I think that's what I said. I think you're always going to want to look at the proportionality of the use of the equipment, whatever that equipment might be. And it's not, it's not exact. I mean, it's, it's going to be some gut feel, I think, on your parts, as to whether or not it meets the test.
Are there any other questions? Thanks, Pat. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Before you move on, your direction, the direction of the board is to send all of these out, is that correct?
Yeah, we're not done, and we got to do public comment.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry, I'm skipping ahead.
It's already.
Tug of my job.
Ambitious. Are there any other discussions from the board? Is there any public comment on this item?
I have no raised hands and no new chats. We go to the room.
For Carol's wearing her fire department hat today, but for those who don't know, Carol is the District One, our District One planning commissioner. Person with many hats. Yeah, I'm here today, Carol Fall, the Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department. We've requested $2,700 for our Firewise Community Activities. The bulk of that is for Community Chipping Day for Trinity Knowles, Trinity Meadows, which are areas where we haven't done fuel reduction projects, which were threatened by the river complex. That would be part of Firewise, or it's Wildfire Awareness Month. Then we have requested funding for our Firesafe Home Demonstration Day, where we would look at three structures. One has defensible space, one has a rooftop sprinkler, one has a home hardening demo. And that would be at the Oof Hall, which is a county building, doesn't get county funds. But we would have community volunteers installing fire-resistant vents and the non-combustible zone around the foundation. So it would be, you know, something that would protect the building, but also show people how easy it is to do home hardening things on their own. Then we've requested, we requested funding to pay for the vents and the travel and the landscape papers. We've also requested funding to pay for a gate. During the river complex, we bulldozed a road from Highway Three to Trinity Center, which normally only has one way in and out. This emergency access road is across SPI property, and SPI has indicated that we can keep that if we install a gate, so that it's only used for emergency access. So that's our $2,700 request. I just wanted to add that being a firewise community is an important thing. It's a national designation. It's, it's in the law, like Title III and in state law. And when we get requests from homeowners saying, my insurance company is going to cancel my insurance, we write the standard fire department letter. You know, we have X distance from hydrants, you know, Y capacity of the engines. But we also delineate all our Firewise Community Activities, and now insurance companies are recognizing that, giving homeowners credit for that, and it helps them keep their homeowner's insurance. So being a Firewise community is important to us and to other communities in the county. So anybody have any questions? Thank you very, very much for considering this.
Thank you. All right. So Supervisor Groves, you had made a... All right, so Supervisor Groves, you had made a, you made a comment on this item, but we'd like to make a formal motion.
Yes. Right. Yes, I would like to give directions to staff to send all, all, all projects, including the, the late one that we received today out for public comment.
All right. I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Brown. Chairman Brown, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, passes. Next item, Human Resources at 4.4, adopt a lactation accommodation policy, no fiscal impact. Laura Zier, she has it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Yep. Okay, good morning, Shelley Nelson, HR Director. So effective January 1st, 2020, there's a Senate Bill 142, California State Law mandated that every employer provide breaks and make reasonable efforts to provide safe, private work locations for lactating employees. And the purpose of this policy would be to ensure that the county is making reasonable efforts to ensure that all county employees are being provided with these breaks and safe private work locations other than bathrooms. For any county employee who desires to express breast milk while at work for their infant child, I have routed this policy with the union, they've reviewed it and approved it, and I'm asking for your approval today.
Any questions from the board? Is there any public comment on this item?
I see none in the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
All right, bring it back to the board. I'll move to approve, item 4.4 is presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Chairman Brown, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes and 4.5, adopt a revised, modified duty return to work policy, no fiscal impact.
So the modified duty return to work policy, which was originally adopted August 21st, 2001, the county recently made revisions to the policy that basically updated formatting, table of contents, an acknowledgement form, and additional content to define medical examinations, salary benefits, sickly, pregnancy and probationary employees in reference to the modified assignments. The unions reviewed this revised policy as well as in full support, requesting you to approve it.
Any questions from the board? Is there any public comment on this item?
I see none in the room. We have no raised hands and no new chats.
All right.
I'll approve 4.5 as stated. I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Gogan, second by Supervisor Frazier. Supervisor Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Yes.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, item 4.7, oh, 4.6, we're gonna skip the vacation policy. And 4.6, adopt a revised vacation CTO leave bank policy, no fiscal impact.
So the vacation and compensatory time off leave policy was originally adopted December 8th, 2001. The county made revisions to include, again, updating formatting, table of contents, acknowledgement form, and converting all applicable forms to be available in a fillable PDF. Additionally, the donation review committee was revised to include a representative from the Probation Peace Officers Association, which was actually the only bargaining unit that was not previously included. These revisions have been reviewed and approved by the union, I'm requesting your approval today.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, is there any public comment on this item?
There's none in the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
All right, bring it back to the board. I'll approve item 4.6 as presented via a motion.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Cox, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Yes.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item 4.7, adopt a telecommuting policy, no fiscal impact.
So on March 27th, 2020, the board had adopted an interim telecommuting policy due to the previous and still-declared active COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the national, state, and local declared emergencies. In an effort to continue to provide essential services to the public and in accordance with this interim personnel policy that provides direction to department heads to permit some employees to telecommute, the county was wishing to adopt a permanent telecommuting policy that would provide further necessary direction. I do want to emphasize that not all jobs are appropriate for telecommuting, that employees will be selected or made requests for consideration to work remotely based on the suitability of their job and the functionalities of their assignments. An employee approved for telecommuting must sign and acknowledge this policy and fill out a remote work plan, which sets forth the terms of approval of telecommuting for the temporary duration and attached to the agenda item or the attachment A's and C's that reference that. The policy has also been reviewed and approved by the union, receiving approval today.
All right, any questions from the board?
I'd like CEO Coon's constant thoughts on this.
Telecommuting. That's earlier in our, in our agenda, we had the increase of our, our pipeline, because I do see us heading that direction, the telecommuting, and it expands our, our hiring pool. So I was, I've been working with our new chief information officer, and that was one of the things that I asked him with was to give us that broadband or give us the, the pipeline with so we could start doing that. So I think he was involved in this too. And I just kind of see that's the trend that we're going to be heading, and I don't think we're coming out of COVID for part of a while, so it benefits us now and also benefits in the future. It's one of those situations where we can, I think it's the first time in a long time, small communities can reverse the hiring trend. I don't know if I'm going off on one of my own tangents, but for the longest time, it's hard to, to draw people to the smaller communities because of housing and wages, things like that, so they're going to the bigger areas. But the trend right now is a lot of large corporations are downsizing, they're not owning the large real estate in the middle of San Francisco because of the cost and they're having their staff telecommute. I think Shelly's family has benefited from that, I have to put her on the spot, but allows higher-paid staff to work from any location, and if we have this type of technology and broadband with, we can draw those type of people to our area that are clean jobs and bring in a, a nice salary. So I think, I see the trend heading that way, and it works also for us too, where we can't draw people into sit in a cubicle in Trinity County, but they might be able to sit in their house somewhere else, and we benefit from their, their knowledge and their experience. So I, I see it as a, as a very positive move for the county.
Did I answer any questions or just?
Yeah, no, 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 you did both, but.
I'm trying to filibuster like a chair for now.
I asked for it. So I would just, I mean, my personal view would be that I would worry that any time we have people that are dealing with the public that we have adequate, more than adequate stuff.
Staff presence.
Well, no, I, I, more the, the speed, the quality of service that the public deserves to get if we're, if we're dealing with people or not, so that's, leaves that to you and staff to make sure that that's.
We don't want to be coming frontier.
Well, I.
Those were your thoughts.
Those were your words, not mine.
Oh, I just wanted to, and forgive me if this was in the backup data and I overlooked it, but would there be a point at which those who are working remotely would then seek reimbursement for office or in-home office expenses because they're working there?
So it is defined in the policy, let me go to it. Everything, of course, would have to be reviewed by a department head before they approve what, when they're assigning someone for telecommuting, because it is important that they are still providing to the public, but to focus on your question, you have a moment.
And when she's looking, I mean, I had, just a little week ago, we had snowmogging, and we don't have a snow day policy here in Trinity County, so unless the offices are closed because of power outage and you can't use equipment, staff, if they can't make it to work, have to take vacation time with the advance of this and, and Zoom and be able to telecommute, staff can, days like that, can work from home, and we're still, we're still maintaining our, our daily process and staff doesn't have to burn up vacation time because they can't make it to work, even though the offices are open. And we have a lot of staff that, that work over the hill, different hills and have to go through some pretty treacherous passes to get here, so, and that is a note.
I don't see any reimbursements.
No. So under Equipment, Tools, and Supplies, it states that the county will provide the computers sufficient to work, you know, their, the keyboard, monitor, mouse, et cetera. Phone or phone stipend if requested and approved by department head. And as far as the workspace and environment, the employee shall designate a workspace within their home for placement and installation of this equipment, which again has to be pre-approved by IT, per the IT policy.
Does that mean they would get additional computer or they remove the one from their old office and transfer it?
The county will provide a county computer for county work, so they may have their own personal, that they may be switching back and forth between when they're not working. But it does not specifically say that they would be reimbursed for anything other than those things.
I guess, usually when you're self-employed.
Thank you for your question.
Is there any public, or any further questions from the board on this? Is there any public comment on this item?
I see none in the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
All right, bring it back to the board then.
I will make a motion to approve 4.7, Mr. Bennett, presented.
Okay. I'll second.
I just would, as a point of further discussion, just add my way to Supervisor Groves' concern that all the department heads, and I'm sure that the CEO will take care of that, but I just really appreciated his statement and would agree with that.
So I also would like some clarity, are they getting to computers?
Per, per department head's discretion.
It's up to the budget and department head typically, especially over the last eighteen months, almost two years since the pandemic has started, I believe most departments have converted, and many of them were this way prior to the pandemic. They have a laptop with a docking station which allows mobility, so I think as people are updating computers that you get with, most of the departments are going in that direction.
Thank you.
Additional comments from the board? Did you already do public comment? Not this time? All right.
We do have a motion and a second.
No, that's right.
Motion by Supervisor Frazier, second by Chair Brown. Chair Brown, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item 4.8, adopt a resolution establishing salary benefits for non-represented management classifications, adopt a resolution establishing salary benefits for non-represented general classifications, adopt a resolution establishing benefits for members of the board of supervisors, and adopt a resolution establishing salary benefits for department heads, no fiscal impact.
So effective January 1st, 2022, CalPERS will transition their health insurance plan, PERS Choice PPO, to what's now called PERS Platinum PPO. And back on September 21st of this year, the board had approved revising the employer's contribution for each qualifying employee for a new intense health benefit plan from PERS Choice to PERS Platinum, which was addressing our retirees. So similarly, the resolutions that I have listed in the staff report, which establishes salary and benefits for the non-represented management, non-represented general, and department heads, and the resolution that establishes the benefits for the board supervisors, needs to be revised by changing PERS Choice to the newly transitioned PERS Platinum wherever it's referenced throughout those resolutions. And in addition to the changes needed regarding the name of a medical plan that's provided to the employees, the department head resolution also addresses an issue in wording from Resolution 2021-07A, which was approved, that additional compensation would be provided upon CAO approval to those department heads who are assigned additional functions not typically combined in other jurisdictions, in other counties. The intent of this was to increase the base salary for those eligible department heads. However, with the original wording, CalPERS would not accept this as an increase to base salary and was considering it what's called special compensation. So in order to do this correctly, we were specifically wanting to list the classification and a new increased salary range, which is what is being done in this resolution. So it's my recommendation to transition, of course, the medical applicable plans throughout those resolutions and make that correction to the department head resolution.
Any questions from the board? Any public comment on this item?
I see none in the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
Bring it back to the board. I'll move to accept 4.8 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Frazier. Supervisor Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 4.9, authorize the county's lead negotiator and director of human resources to negotiate inside letter agreements with the Deputy Sheriff's Association General Unit Management and Confidentiality and Probation Peace Officers Association and Skilled Trades Unit effective upon execution by both bargaining unit and county, changing the medical insurance sections to reflect the change of PERS Choice to PERS Platinum, no fiscal impact. Seems like a repeat potentially.
It is, so, and this here, just the difference would be is, we're asking that you authorize Sophie Meyer, the lead negotiator, myself, to negotiate these changes directly with these five bargaining units, which are the DSA, the General, Management Confidential, Probation Peace Officers, and Skilled Trades. By only changing those references of wherever it's PERS Choice, we change it to PERS Platinum.
Any questions from the board?
Man, that's, how easy is that? You're going from Choice to Platinum. Man, that's gotta be an improvement.
How does something that's just a wording change become something that has to be negotiated with them?
Well, everything that we do with an employee, it's a contract, it's a memorandum of understanding, so if we're making changes with them, we need to make sure everybody agrees to it. So it's just more, call it a formality, but it's, it's a respective process, for sure. Thank you.
Any public comment on this?
None in the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
All right, bring it back to the board. I'll move to accept 4.9 as presented.
Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, 4.10, approve a revised job description for behavioral health triage manager effective December 21st, 2021, no fiscal impact.
So in evaluating the behavioral health triage manager existing job description, which was adopted back in 2016, it's come to our attention that some changes had occurred to which programs the department and these classifications are actually responsible for, the essential functions that this classification performs, as well as requirements for hire. So in the staff report, I kind of define out all the specific changes, but under the categories in the job description, definition, distinguishing characteristics, who the incumbent would report to, and other essential duties, as well as special requirements, we're asking to make the changes that are all exhibited there. These would allow for a more effective recruitment opportunity and a more accurate description of their essential duties. Have had the union review these changes, they're in full support, requesting your approval.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, is there any public comment?
None in the room. I have no raised hands and no new chats.
All right, bring it back to the board then. I'll move to approve item 4.10 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Brown, second by Supervisor Fox. Supervisor Fox, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and last here. All right, and last here on open session, we have 4.11, take the following actions effective December 21st of 2021, approve the job descriptions, add the salary range, and add to the alphabetical listing of classifications, A division director at range M255, and two, modify the building and planning department canvas divisions, departmental allocation listing by removing the program manager one classification and adding one, one division director, parts and class and salary benefits per month for a division director at A step is $10,956.
So it's been requested that, I'm sorry, that a division director classification be developed and adopted that can be used as needed within various departments who oversee a separate division. This classification would plan, organize, direct, and manage the assigned division of the department, having day-to-day responsibility for the coordination and supervision of the division's operations and functions. Attached is the newly written job description for a countywide division director classification, setting a salary range of M255. In addition to that, the building and planning department would benefit from having a dedicated division director over the canvas division. The department requests revising their department listing of allocations by replacing program manager classification with the division director classification. And this change would not, it wouldn't actually add any allocation, so we're not increasing the full-time equivalence there, only revising the classification that's listed. The union has reviewed this job description and are in support of it.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, this seems to be, for the cannabis division, really underpaid, in my view.
So more time Keith than Mr.?
I, I feel that $6,500 a month paid for at that level in cannabis is underpaid.
Well, it says $10,958.
That's total benefits.
Including our salary benefits.
All right, so if it's 65, I mean, we're looking at $70,000 to run the cannabis division.
We have some other similar division directors within the county classifications, and this is a similar level pay? And it would need to be under the, okay.
I understand that, that this may be an appropriate pay for other division managers in cannabis, and I know this is my private sector crashing into the real world of unions and governments, but, I mean, I wouldn't do that job for $70,000.
Man, weighted though.
Excuse me?
Plus benefits, plus everything else, correct?
Yep, yep. Through the county government, we do provide pension and benefits and 14 paid holidays.
So Keith, what would you?
Well, let's just do questions first, technical questions, then I'll do public comment. Any technical questions? Public comment, I think Brower's out there.
Yep.
No one.
Brower's out there.
Yep.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I, I agree Supervisor Groves is that a laughable number. County, I mean, it's just the continual undermining of, of this program to only offer that amount of pay for such a stressful, important position within the county. With all respect, Shelly, it's, that position is not comparable to any other director position within the county departments. And if we're going to get serious about this, we're going to have to pay some, you know, somebody that is professional. So I agree, it's, it's a severely under, underpaid planning out there. Get, get somebody some money to really do this right, please. Thank you.
I have no other raised hands and no new chats.
All right, back to the board for discussion.
What's the entire salary range going to be? Going to get the actual?
I don't have the whole salary schedule around here.
So it's about 25%. From A step to E is about 25% increase, 1% increase?
So, yeah, A through G, F and G are longevity steps, but they are all separated by 5%. So if you went up to E, 25%?
Which is closer to $90.
Could, off the top of your head, do you have some other department head salaries? Just so we kind of.
So I don't have it with me here, but we could, what are you looking for? I'm sorry.
Is it equal right now as it stands? Are we?
Well, we would have to be cautious because a division director would be under a deputy director, and then deputy director is under a department head. So if we went any higher, that would upset that balance.
So basically, our, our only other option would be to hire a deputy director of cannabis if we wanted to pay higher?
Would be to create?
Or a deputy director of planning, which we already have, that would be controlling cannabis.
It would be, yeah, you would have to create a, a new deputy director position within cannabis, take cannabis and make it its own division and put a director above cannabis. Or we do get in a compaction, that's what Shelly's been trying to work on, is a compaction. I don't have a problem raising this, I've never had a board say, pay more money to people or so on. I mean, it's kind of a unique situation, and I have no issue with it, and I do agree that it is going to be a, a position in which we need the right person in there, and the right person may cost them more money. But we're trying to, you know, you got to put everything within the salary schedule so we don't then kick up our deputy director, which then immediately kicks up our director, and then we, those are disproportionate. But if it's the board's recommendation to go back and review the salary or review this division director title and maybe bring back a, a second deputy director, we, we could do all that.
Would we not disrupt the vote so much if we went, said with 25%, maybe 12%, 10%?
I'd have to go to the drawing board and look at it, which I could bring something back.
Wouldn't it be easier to just put this needed position into a different title rather than try to?
Well, we, I think that's why we just created this title.
Yeah.
Or we're trying to create this title.
And a title has to have a job description, it has to be vetted with the union before I can bring it back to you.
Can we start with this so that it can be in place?
Absolutely.
And that would be my question to Dr. Coons, is if we hire somebody that's really good at the job and they are worth way more money than this, at that point, we can come back and say, hey, we want to make you the director of our planning division that we're going to break out from, I mean, of cannabis, we're going to break out from planning, and we can give them a raise that way without stringing up this guy.
If we could come back to the board, anything above B step, I have to come back to the board, I can, I can issue a B step, anything above that, come back to the board, so if we wanted to bring somebody in at E step, the board could approve that, and then at that time, make it complicated, but, but making it faster, we could say, well, we see that we're putting this person in kind of limbo, that they don't, they don't have any increases, so we're going to change this position too and bring back a second deputy director, and would we have to, Margaret? Would we have to?
We would have to create a new job description before we post that.
We'd have to make it a, a series in that step, so we could promote them to a deputy director.
Yeah, it's a multiple step process. We'd have to create that position, we'd have to then set, pay for it, we'd have to negotiate with the union, we'd have to bring it back, and we'd have to have a promotional opportunity, which means we'd have to fly it in-house, look for applications and move to that position, we're going to be compliant with the regulations. But it all could be done.
Yes, if it's all possible.
So if we find the right person and we need to pay them more money, we'll figure out how to make, pay them more money.
I think you watch this on, on.
No, no, we won't, we won't do that way. What will happen is if we find somebody who's overqualified for the position and is unwilling to take it at the current price, then we'll come back, we will suspend that hiring, we'll bring it back to the board to get permission to create a new class, we'll negotiate with the union, we'll set a salary for it, and then we'll advertise it and ask them to apply to that position.
I did?
Good to me.
All right.
Shelly, you deal with that?
Yes.
So is that clear? Is that, do we need a motion?
Do you have a clear?
I'm, I'm not clear about that.
I, I think there's a two-parter, so this is an item on the table, if the board is pleased and can afford with it, absolutely, you can do that as the other part, that is direction that was given to staff, that if we do get an applicant for this position that is overqualified and unwilling to accept at this price, we know the steps to proceed forward. And that would be an applicant that the county is making an, an offer to, correct?
I think that that's probably our only alternative, given the circumstances we're in now, that I think not having this higher level will keep a lot of people from applying that are high-level management. I mean, quite frankly, this is the worst job in the county.
It might depend on the person too. I mean, some people might really thrive on stressful jobs, so you, you never can tell. It wouldn't be my first choice of jobs, but some people might enjoy it.
Well, please find one for us, Dan. But with that, I guess, my concerns are known that, quite frankly, to me, we would have to pay like $120,000, which I know throws a monkey wrench into all, everybody in the county, that that would be the highest paid person in the county and all that sort of stuff. That I would move to adopt 4.1 as presented, understanding for CEO Coons that I, on the side note, I personally would be ones and willing to entertain going up to step E when that time came.
Yeah, it's, it's our end to 77, 151 to 93, 778, so we have the authority to go up to $93,000 starting salary.
Supervisor Groves, to clarify in your motion, use.
My motion is to adopt 4.1 as presented.
4.11.
4.11.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Fraser. Supervisor Fraser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Hogan.
Aye.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
I take all your comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelly. That concludes the open. Shelly, I'm, I'm sorry, Chair. My final moment, my final chairman moment? Have a happy holiday.
Thank you.
And I defer to, to the Chairman Brown, thank you very much for your year as, as Chair, you've done a wonderful job and have brought a calming effect to the board that can pass boards of turmoil, and I'm really proud of you and appreciate all your work that you've done.
I appreciate that. So with that, we will conclude this open session and go into closed session, item 5.1, Government Code Section 549, 54.5C, Conference of Legal Counselors, this is litigation number cases one, Westons Water District, V, five? Ah, it's a verse, it's a verse. Westons Water District versus all persons interested in the matter of the contract between the United States and Westons Water District, parentheses Fresno County Superior Court Case Number 19CECG03887. Is there any public comment on this?
John Brower, whenever you're ready.
John Brower, this is about closed session, item 5.1.
Great, I just want to encourage the board to continue an aggressive execution on this matter. It's possibly the most important long-term thing for our county to engage in is protecting our water and, you know, gain maximum benefit for Trinity County folks from this water resource, so again, I encourage an aggressive posture on this case and possibly prepare for similar action with the East Side's reservoir moving forward also. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
I see no one in the room. I have no other raised hands and no new chats.
All right, concludes.